Okay, you guys are good to go.
Okay, you guys are good to go.
Okay, good evening. Let's have a little slide in the room for everyone here in online. It's April 21st, 2025. This is the GBOS regular meeting. Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Weekend Act as found in statute 34.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code on Supervising Public Meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting standard of conduct by policy number 702. I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and fire department supervisor. Um, Mike, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
Sure. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous people of Alaska, whose land we reside on. Inti of Girdwood, situated between the areas known to be Deninyah and Alutik homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of the wider community that seeks to maintain the sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present time, for peoples.
Thank you. We'll do roll call next. Uh, Kyla Margaret, could you take both?
My name Jennifer Wingard.
You're Brian Burnett.
Here.
Um, Mike Edginton.
Presenting.
Thank you. Kelly Okanak. Not seeing her. And Brianna Sullivan.
Here. Thank you. If Kelly comes online, just let us know. I've not heard that she's um, not coming. Are there any disclosures this evening? Items on the agenda now or later? Hearing none. All announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business of our discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. I entertain a motion for tonight's GBOS meeting agenda.
I'm going to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Any questions?
Um, Jared, I if I, I'd like to suppose we change the order of the day and I'd like to move the um, item number 12 and old business up to the um, top of the queue. So that Karen can can enjoy the rest of the meeting. Um, after we consider the the loan of four for sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move number 12 up in front of number nine. Any other discussion or any discussion on this item? Any objections to the amendment? Okay, this amendment has passed.
They have another potential amendment. Um, actually, item number nine, part of it won't cover. We can get to it there. Item number 15 was postponed in land use, and I think we we could deal with it tonight or we could wait till next month. I propose we drop that from tonight's agenda and deal with it. There's new business in May.
Second for the amended.
Also.
Second by Jennifer. To move may. Any discussion on this?
Question. Um, is this, are we expecting this to become some sort of the um, an action item in future agendas, or this is an educational?
Potential. My.
Okay, thank you.
Marco?
Uh, I thought Alpenborough was supposed to be on the agenda for this evening. I don't see it under old business.
That's. Thirteen.
So thirteen.
It's number thirteen.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Uh, back to amendment for 15, other discussion? Any objections to removing for tonight? That amendment has passed. Back to the main motion. Any, or are there any further amendments? Agenda? It will go by consent then if the agenda has amended or approved. Hearing nothing else, the agenda is approved with those amendments. Okay, that means we're going on to presentations. Oh, I did skip that. Thank you. Minutes approval from March 24th.
Need to approve March 24th, GBOS regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Given by Brian. Any discussion on the minute? Will by consent? The minutes from March 24th are approved. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mark, for those minutes. Now we'll go to presentations. And AWU welcome. The microphone's right there and where you are is also close enough for everyone online to hear you.
And do we have a, we emailed you a presentation. Oh, we've got it right here in front of us. Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Schimshimer, engineering director at AWU, and I've got Jacques Anendale, our assets manager. We've come here tonight because we think it's time that, well, on a periodic basis, we should let you know what we're doing in the valley. And we have a couple of projects that are brewing out there that we just want to bring to your attention. So this is going to be three projects. We actually have more work than that going on. At the plant itself and one or two other products in the valley, but these are the three we'll discuss tonight. Um, Girdwood Water, the infiltration, the INI project, which is perpetual. And then the Donner inner tie across Aliaska Highway. So by way of reference, by way of understanding, Girdwood is supplied today with from water by AWU for from two wells, wells one and two. Well, one has a water quality issue. It's with manganese and manganese, which is not a health hazard or classified as a health hazard at this time is not something that you really want to see in your water. I wouldn't want to see it in my water. It stains toilets, stains shirts, can turn things black and turn things red. It's like iron. So while it's a high-producing well, it's not the best water quality. Well, two is a lower-producing well, good water quality, but it has a Goodisaw compliance issue, which is groundwater under the influence of surface water, which means that it's got some treatment regimes that we have to consider. So we have two wells along the valley, but they're both have some issues. So we have a regulatory issue. We have a water quality issue. And then, so what we're looking at is a project here uh, to address the water supply, to address wells one and two. And as we address those wells, we want to address the O and M costs, which are pretty high with regards to going out to a well at the end of the runway. The snow removal is getting to us. The wells are getting to us. And the potential upgrades we have to do at that site are significant, and we just just, you know, pile on top of the O and M expenses. So as I just said, wells one and two, we all know where they are. They're very close to each other, which is an interesting thing about the geology of Girdwood that you can have two very close wells and you can have radically different both supply and qualities. Um, it really makes you wonder whenever you punch a well, you know, don't assume that just because your neighbor has water, you have water. But, you know, most of Girdwood is now coming onto the system, so it's not an issue. Uh, again, well, two, good quality water. Uh, but it's under a compliance order by the D E C. Well, one, high flow. You know, um, manganese issues, which no one likes. So what we've done is we thought, instead of dumping a lot of money into these two wells and try to put together a treatment regime that the D E C wants, which would be extremely expensive, um, create a lot of negatives, in my opinion, negative side effects with filtration, uh, which would drive up the O and M cost and create a lot of waste. That would be one thing. And then, of course, the well one, you know, the same issue there, getting manganese out of your water is not an easy process. So what we thought is that we're going to move the entire well location closer to uh, the new Girdwood town site. That helps out with the operations issues. And we punched a well, which I think people know of. It's underneath where there's, it's where the snow dump is. And for the life of me, I don't quite know why we put one under a snow dump and thought that was a good idea, but we did it. We found sufficient water. Uh, actually, and uh, you know, we were looking for a certain quantity. We found it. We found the quality. Now, the location isn't ideal. It's on H L B land, which is something that works really well for us. We can get access to H L B land. But it's not where I would want to see this thing happen. So we're looking at moving it uh, just up High Tower, along the creek side, just north. That's our, our location of choice right now. You can see that in that big green dot there. Okay, next. In order to make all this thing work, first of all, you go to the bottom line here. The rough order of magnitude on this project is 15 to 20 million dollars to make, to do the well, to do the treatment that you believe you're going to need, uh, to put in the pumps, because we have pressure zone issues and to do the connection. Along with all the miscellaneous things that you need to do, there's site access, upgrades, and you name it. And we're also looking at a minor amount of storage in this project. Uh, storage is primarily for contact time on chlorine, so that we get the contact time. That is an issue that well two is running into right now, is contact time. We use the inner tie as contact, but that's not going to work forever. So we're looking at storage for contact. The way we're going to fund this right now through the State of Alaska D E C, they have the state revolving loan fund. And somehow they got federal dollars, which are actually in their account, so they're not in the clawback provisions of today. We have a $5 million commitment on well one to take care of the emerging contaminant of manganese. It's the emerging contaminant. So it's on their list. We have it in the well, five million. Well, two, one and a half million for a compliance order. Um, these so we're, so right there, we are getting about six and a half million from the D E C to take care of our issues. These are in the form of a forgivable loan, so fundamentally, 100% uh, grant with no match. Uh, we believe, we have applied for and working through Mikowski's office, we believe we're going to get around $3 million in congressionally directed spending. Now, it is uh, high-centered in the continuing resolution, which won't be passed until best guess of September, because it was put off till then. Who knows if September becomes October and what happens? There is a suspicion, of course, that the current administration is going to, you know, get rid of all those kind of grants, but what we're actually seeing is that when it comes to hard infrastructure grants like this, where you're talking about wells and pipes and sewer lines and buildings, they seem to be starting to flow again. There was a 90-day moratorium on grants, but we're starting to see the agencies open up their application process again, and the ones that are flowing are just like this. So I'm fairly optimistic I can get the 3 million. Meaning that we have about 9 and a half million out of the 15 to 20. That's pretty good. Um, AWU has the capacity to to pay for the rest, and we will be paid back through your rates, uh, which are not impacted by this because you're part of the pool of rates. So this is just what we do. This is a lot cheaper than upgrading wells one or two, either independently or collectively. We were looking at 15 to 20 million per well there. And the operational costs would just kill us. So this is really kind of what we're looking for. We just wanted to bring it to your attention for, you know, feedback. Okay, next.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I I'm confused. The so the the spend of 5 million on well one is not, this isn't to make it the prime, to keep it. It's a primary well. This is kind of retrovive.
Fundamentally, we'd like to abandon both wells one and two.
Okay, so does that mean those those two costs wouldn't be acceptable? You need.
No, no, those are because you have a well with manganese in it.
Right.
Get one and a half million dollars to fix your problem.
Okay, got it.
And the fix is to abandon the well.
Got it.
And drill a new well here. And you're okay. Same with the 5 million.
Right.
Here's, here's $5 million to fix your problem. And what's the fix? Drilling a new well, same well. We'll actually be drilling two wells because you always drill two, but we're transferring the 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 money that we got for the problem to a new location.
Makes sense.
The wells aren't worth saving. Okay. Other project that we're doing here this year is the infiltration and inflow into this sewer system. Now Girdwood Sewer System has has leaked forever and will leak forever. This is an annual million to $2 million a year that we spend chasing large leaks. Um, we catch a lot of leaks and then over time we find more as the system, you know, starts to leak again. Our suspicion is that the majority of leaks that we're chasing uh, or or that are out there are on private property. And we don't go on private property. So we'll fix our system. The private property will leak and we'll have I N I pretty much forever in Girdwood. But what we need to do is keep it at a manageable inflow. Um, if we were to abandon our I N I project and just let the system go, the inflows would overwhelm the plant. And what would happen at the plant is that we would run into permit compliance issues of the discharge. But uh, inflows into the plant in rain events, forest air, those kind of things are pretty high. And so we have a peaking plant and we have a permit that we've come dangerously close. We don't want to, we don't have exceedances, but we don't want to be there. And as the valley grows, the situation just gets worse and worse. So this is a project that we will do forever to keep the plant uh, within its permit limits. And there's, you can see where it's going to happen at any given time. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. We're chasing uh, ionized manholes. We've got, you know, uh, we've got suspicions. We've got uh, condition assessments to kind of point us in the right direction where we think this is going to be. But you know how to find a, I mean, this, the whole thing is underwater. Where do you find your leak, you know, so? We do what we can, as as best as we can, and we just continue to put uh, funds against it. But it's a project that you should know that we're on a non, non-stop basis doing. And then the last one to talk about today is the Donner.
We have one question I, for sure, on the last slide, maybe, Mr. Schimshimer, if it's okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you have a question too?
Maybe you have.
Okay. I I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about the scope of that work, that work involves, like within those trapezoids and dingles, like is this digging up areas where you're working through the manhole covers?
Combination.
Okay.
It depends on what we find. Yeah, um, there there are some type replacements, which are just open trench. And in 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 a lot of places, you line, would line the pipe. In Girdwood with uh, with gravel roads, which are not that hard to either dig up or replace, uh, we're going to, we're going to open trench this because it's it's a better product and it's and it's cheaper and faster. We are constantly working on manholes. Manholes leak, all of them leak, and we have different technologies of liners on the inside, liners on the outside, you know, sealed lids, you name it. And and so we're always doing manholes. We are doing a variety of replacements. And then as we do replacements, we're doing the upsizing, of course, you know, making sure that back in the day, somebody put in a four-inch line for, you know, 30 homes. Well, we'll go to eight or 12 or whatever it is. So we're doing upsizing. We're doing open trench. We're doing manhole rebuilds from simple linings to full manholes, and we're on the hunt for leaks. That's a big part of this, is just find us the leaks, because we can't do the whole valley. We gotta, we gotta hit the the low-hanging fruit. That's what the scope is.
Thank you. Well, on this map, I was just going to ask, are these an example of one neighborhood or in there everywhere? Or is this the one that you're focusing on right now?
For this year. This is this year's work. And then next year, we're going to move up to the next neighborhood. Yeah. And then you just just keep going.
Thank you.
So, yeah, good uh, 2025 work. Last one to talk about here is the Donner Water Inner Tie. Um, this is, I wish we had a, almost a slightly bigger map of this. This is a um, this is going to be a directional drill. So we were not going to dig up the highway to go across the Aliaska Highway. We're going to just drill underneath it. It's about a million to a million and a half dollar project. Right now, the bids haven't been opened yet. So we don't quite know, and we're going to do this one this year. This, this project was uh, kind of motivated by the fact that uh, south of this is the brewery and there's some development planned there. We needed to have our mains run through there, and you've already installed the mains. And we have a deal to make sure that as you do your development, that we supply the water pressures and clothes that you need for fire and and so on and so forth. So this is a and then when we examined this, we said, boy, there's some system-wide impacts, positive impacts that we can get off of this. Because as we flow through the uh, timberline neighborhoods, this is going to help with everybody's resiliency and flow. Plus, and and resilience is a big thing for us, you know, just because your water is working today. We want to make sure that any given line can break in an earthquake or for any particular reason, and and we don't lose fire flow. So this has got a basis in resiliency. It's got a basis in in pressure, in flow, system-wide, or at least system to the south of the highway. It's primary driver, the reason that we're doing this, of course, from the developments on that side of the road, but it's something everyone should know about. It shouldn't, it won't impact traffic, because again, we're not, we're not cutting the road. We're going underneath it, pothole on either side. Um, it should be something interesting to watch more than anything else. I think that's it. There are other projects in the valley that we're working on, and we'll come back and present them as they they gel. But the big one here tonight is, is the well. That well product is I would say two to three years out. Site acquisition is going to, while while it's H L B's land, there's going to be zoning issues. There's use issues that we're aware of. And we don't even have a design. So we're going to have to take a lot of those things into account, and we're looking at at least a 12 to 18-month duration for site. Probably simultaneously designing at a certain rate, and then, of course, not all the money is gelled just yet. The 3 million is still up in the air. So I would guess that three years from now, you might see a well there, but probably not earlier than three. And and that's why we're on track with what what's, with what we can do with regards to our compliance orders with well two and and we will be able to maintain all the flows until that point.
Thank you, Mr. Schimshimer. Yes, you do have questions, and this is a presentation. We'll start with GBOS numbers. Uh, Kelly online. I did see you came in at, for the record, 705-ish, so thank you, and go ahead.
703, but hey, um, just a question on the Holton Hills extension. Is that on the books? And I I feel like that's a substantial project, but so I'm surprised you didn't mention it.
Hey, um, good question. Holton Hills is an H L B uh, uh, developer uh, agreement, and they're moving forward with that as a private development. Um, it's not an AWU capital project. Um, tonight I was talking about AWU, AWU-driven, AWU capital project. Still not an AWU-driven project. We are supporting that because, of course, they do water and sewer. Well, we do water and sewer, but we're not paying for it. We're not driving it. It's a private development that a private developer is doing. Um, but we do have a grant to upsize the sewer line downstream from that development. So, which is going to help a lot of uh, the High Tower area. So we're going to be up sizing a line in High Tower. That will probably be one, two, or three years out. And it will allow, of course, Holton Hills um, sufficient flow into the future. They could start to, they could start today. They'd have flow, but, you know, 10 years from now, they bottleneck. But we're also trying to de-bottleneck High Tower. So we'll be back to talk about grant funding on High Tower. But directly Holton Hills is not our project.
Thank you. And Kelly, your hand's still up, just so you know. Uh, Jennifer or Brian?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
And you go then.
Um, Mr. Schimshimer, thanks so much for coming to us in front of the community tonight um, with this great update. I have a couple of questions concerning kind of the wells one and two zone in there. Does the um, does the million gallon uh, tank up by Elia's vehicle maintenance remain in in use in the system?
Yes. Uh, that would remain in use regardless of the fate of well one and two. We would put a about a 500,000 gallon tank, and I'm thinking of a um, subsurface tank, subsurface concrete tank. I don't want to see a big water tank in those town. Nobody wants to see that. So we would do that, and that's that's for contact time for chlorination in the event that we need that. Um, and then you want 500,000 gallons sitting right in the center of the town for fire reasons. I think that would be a good thing. That tank will stay in use until we can replace it. And long-term, and long-term, five to 10 years from now, that tank probably has to be replaced as well. And I wouldn't replace it at the same spot. We are currently doing a project to look for another site, and the other site would be farther up the valley, higher in elevation, so that we could pressurize the valley. And that would also be a 1 to 2 million gallon tank. That's future planning out there.
Thank you. And then just one more question about the well site out there. There's, there's a lot going on around there as far as the uh, hotel, as far as they've got some thoughts about um, um, summer cooling, using water for summer cooling. And and then, of course, there's Elia's snowmaking going on on separate wells out there. Is this going to impact any of those operations?
We, those, those operations are, I mean, if they put a well out there, they're going to be close to the well one and two. We're shutting well one and two down.
Yep.
So, yep, if they want the the a water font, there's really not a big shortage of water in the grounded Girdwood. That's not the issue.
Ooh splash.
Yeah. But um, it, it, the issue we have is is flow and quality. You know, and we want deep water. We don't want shallow.
Yep.
So cooling systems can use shallow water. Snowmaking can use any water you want, but we can't.
Yep.
We, we drink our water. Out of the water quality.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Uh, speaking of drinking our water, is the manganese contamination that you're talking about something that like the community should be aware of or that we should be.
It's not online.
Something about or it's not.
No, we don't have that well online.
Oh, okay.
That well would come on, if you had a fire here in town and this building was burning down, that well would come online. And you wouldn't like it the next day, but you'd want, you'd want the fire. Um, we are not putting that water in the system.
I am.
If we did, we'd put it in just enough that you would never notice. But uh, we're not, we're not trying to play that game. We're just, that's not part of our mix. If we can just get rid of it, fine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bryce, thanks for your patience. Oh, Mike?
Yeah, um, two questions about the new well site. Uh, you mentioned earlier that um, the geology is interesting, and you can put two wells next to each other and get very different uh, flows. Um, different types of water. You do, your test well is not where the planned well is. Are you sure?
No.
Right. So is that, that's the biggest question.
It's, it's a, it's a great question. We are not done with our due diligence.
Right.
Before we make a full commitment to that site, we've got another well to drill.
Okay.
Because I'm not convinced that 300 feet in that location is not going to change everything.
Correct.
We do have another well in that region that we have samples for, so closer by, but I I would prefer one like right there.
Okay.
So there is due diligence that needs to be finished on that site.
And my other question was, um, it's either in or very, very close to, um, I think flood plain as well.
Uh, yeah.
So what are the considerations around that? It's elevation and.
Oh, obviously, we, well, you know, I, I, I think.
So, um, yeah, I do know this one. So, um, Jacques Anendel Capitality Manager, he's a certified flood plain manager for four years. That's in a flood plain, uh, so we have considered the elevation of it. It's not in the floodway, which is a restricted area. So, um, we've put that into consideration. Obviously, we're going to finish our due diligence here. Uh, but we're making sure that the site can not only withstand the flooding, but also not raise flood levels further. So that's all in consideration.
Okay. So there are still some question marks around that plan.
We don't have a design. We don't have the site under our control. There are considerations that this I I'm pretty optimistic, but I think it's 60% go and 40%, we might find something that would stop this project. And then we would just come back and say, we're not doing it here. We may have to find another site.
Okay, now Bryce online.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, hey, Mark, Jock, thanks for coming. Really appreciate you guys taking time out of your evening to, you know, keep us informed and let us know what you're working on. So thank you for that. Mine's not necessarily a question, but more of kind of a comment on, I know, I'm personally not a huge fan of that well location. You know, that potential HLB parcel has some major potential in the next 30, 40, 50 years, you know, as Girdwood continues to develop long into the future. You know, so there's not a floodway. There is potential it could be a public park or other means. And it would be a real shame to kind of jinx that with a, you know, utility component right there. So I'd like to personally see some other locations that you guys might be considering in the valley. You know, the beauty of their wells, yes, well, the snow dump, it's out of the way. No one likes to see utilities as important as they actually are. So personally, I'm not a huge fan of having utilities right next to a downtown area with potential development in a parcel, you know, 40 years from now. So, yeah, I'd love to see some more locations. That's my comment. Thanks.
Kyle?
Good question about the Echo Ridge Vale upgrade for the Pressure House. Is that on state to happen? I know they're going to replace that there.
Yeah.
We did that.
That's an interesting project. It started off as, you know, there's all these little facilities. Every corner has got this little box and you open it up and it's really disgusting.
Yeah.
So we started off trying to rebuild each one of those. And by the time we were done, we said, this is just terrible. We're just, we're not getting anywhere. So we created the one building on that parcel there. I think it was a parcel, I'm not quite sure. That project is pretty well gelled. Of course, every time it gels, the estimate on that project goes, just it's gone through the roof for some reason. I don't quite get it. But I don't know our timetable on that. Is that, do you know our timetable on that?
I don't.
If I don't know the timetable, it's not happening this year.
I don't believe it's happening.
Not happening this year.
Okay.
Is it happening next year? Possibly. It is very near term for us. I mean, we have the design, we have the project. I think we have all the funding for it. It's just a function of, do we have all the staff? I mean, we're, we're limited on staff. So as soon as we get everybody lined up, we'll press the button on it. So it's not that far in the future.
Yeah, I knew it was close. It's like, it's one of us coming.
Yeah.
Any other questions in the room or online? And come forward, please. Me online.
Hi, I was just really curious about more kind of different locations as well. I have concerns for contamination because of that downstream location. Our watershed is pretty hindered through lots of bad policy. Anyway, we've got lots of obstructions. Water doesn't flow where we think it flows. We don't have any great data. But it all formed in confluence right there at that Elieska Bridge. You're going to have all the surface flow runoff coming, everything from that entire northeastern section of all of Girdwood will be coming. So anyways, not a good spot for contamination. I would think your potential for contamination is going to be a bit higher in that location. I would like your proposed saying up higher, up more northern on Hightower Road. You'd potentially going up for a well location.
Well, I mean, I heard it, Bryce, and, and now you saying, you know, make sure that you cover your bases and figure out if this is the right. So I'm going to go away from here with these comments and going to think about, did we really get this? Now, with regards to, you're thinking about contamination in the well?
Yeah, just because of all the, our surface water flow. So two of our navigable waters in this valley are not even identified in any MOA document.
So.
And so.
Well, here's, here's the, so what's wrong with well two? Is that it's groundwater under the influence of surface water. See, the surface water, be it contaminated or clean, is migrating down and you're pumping it back up.
Right.
If we have that same situation here, we're not doing this.
Because how shallow is that well?
That's not going to be a very shallow well. I think we're going down about 200 plus feet. You have to get away, and we have to find confining layers and all that kind of stuff. You have to get away from the surface water issue. Otherwise, you will have contaminants. You will be right back re-served. So we're not, we are cognizant of that. That, you know, we're just not going to move forward with something that's going to be subject to contamination.
Yeah.
To the waterfall.
Yeah, no, I get it. Then my other question is going to be, so if you got the wells, Mr. Green, that comes with the pump house too? And then what would that do? Because that is a pump house in between the other two wells, right? Would that just be decommissioned, left abandoned in place?
We're not quite, I mean, don't know the answer to that. I would like to see the entire thing decommissioned in this white plain. Because I think a lot of times we, we just like walk away from these things. 20 years later, somebody stumbles over and we see this junky wellhouse. I would like to see it go away. Will it go away? I'm not sure because we may end up having to keep it for backup water.
I was going to say, I sit on the fire department board and I know that we'd be pretty excited to have, you know, I think it's something like, what is it, 50, 70% of the homes in this community don't have access to water. If they were to catch on fire, so that's.
Yeah.
Anything that we could have that, that'd be beneficial for the community.
And again, so you would, might like the idea that we're putting 500,000 gallons right there.
Absolutely.
Easy access, even if the power fails. And we'll have backup generators on this thing, but right there, I, I find that appealing, actually. Will well two of them stick around? They probably will, but until somebody decides to get rid of them. Just because no one will quite trust the new well for some time.
And I think it's. Thanks, Manda. We have one more online. Crystal?
Hi, Crystal Hope. I just wanted to make a suggestion for where to possibly investigate if you're still considering that, which would be the six and a half acre parcel that they carved off of the Holton Hills development. It was already zoned GIP, guarded institutions and parks. And that was why I asked for it to be separated from the rest of the private development. And so it's owned by HLB, so you're going to have the same situation there. But it is already zoned properly because that is currently the zoning that the current AWU building is sitting on down at the industrial park, I believe. So it's also like higher ground, so like up valley. So anyway, might be worth checking, checking that out. And also, I will say, I just recently got some water line and sewer line installed here in Girdwood. And working with AWU Department for the permitting was actually a good process and quick, which is differing from the Muni, the regular Muni department, building department. But, so I think that you guys run a, a good shop there. But I, it is a little frustrating to be told like your community has the infrastructure to support new developments. And then, you know, we're being told we're shutting down both of your wells. So just something to consider. We need to be really careful about where we're expanding when we don't have the current infrastructure in place. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, we take that, I'm hearing comments about location. So we're taking that back with us. If there's a better location, we're going to do the better location. I'm not stuck on this. But I mean, there's pros and cons to every location. Again, if you're interested in fire, that's a great location. If you want to park there, that's not a good location. So there will be that discussion that has to happen as to where does the community want it? Are you willing to accept the pros and cons of any particular location? I'm a little bit ambivalent. I kind of like that location, but, you know? We can make it all work.
I think that's our list of questions for now and comments. So thank you very, very much for coming out tonight, Mark and Jock.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. So number two on presentations and reports is the GBOS request for reconsideration vote. That was after last month's meeting. A motion was made, the reconsideration is seconded. And this is our time to vote.
Yeah, I'll take this. So, so last, as you remember, last time, we had a discussion about the parcel H issue at the airport. And we made a decision that we were going to send a letter to the municipality. We were talking about, we had a draft of the latter. We were going to review the draft, et cetera. After the meeting, I got, I received a comment that we hadn't gone through. We, we hadn't gone through a, we hadn't basically gone through the proper disclosure process for that discussion. And if there was a challenge to it, it would delay us by months. So I thought the easier path was just to go back through, do reconsideration. And then what, what's the one theme is tonight, now, that item is suspended. Tonight, we have a vote right now where we can reconsider it and reopen it, or we can decide to keep it as it was. In either case, we're probably going to touch on it again later, even if it's just to review the, even if we decide to not reconsider the issue and just, we'll have the opportunity to review the latter. We revise subsequently. So basically, this vote is, do we reopen the item? Do we reopen, do we reopen the item and redo it? Or do we keep things as it was? And the concern about keeping things as it was is we didn't really go through a, a full disclosure process. So there is some risk if we keep it the way it was. But at least if we vote on it now, we've made a hard and firm decision on whether or not. So having said that, so there's a motion, there's effectively a move to reconsider the vote. Well, that's, that move has already happened and it was seconded. So there's a, that's effectively what's in front of us. So a vote yes would be, we'll then discuss it fully. An item 10, a vote no would be, item 10, we'll just review the amendments, the latter, move on.
Any discussion on that? Jennifer?
Well, I noticed we have a packed agenda tonight and also that this, I understand this kind of in principle, but it wouldn't have changed regardless of that potential conflict of victors. It would not have changed the outcome. And so that vote was pretty dominant and not on, on the edge. So I would prefer to just move on.
Agreed. I'd prefer to move on.
Thank you. And I, I see the points and agree that the outcome might be exactly the same. But the, the look isn't great that we didn't go through the disclosures and we can, can still just go through the formality. So next we would vote for reconsidering, like Mike just said, or yes, yes, or no is. And then we'll get to it on number 10 either way. Anything else? Brian?
I'm, I'm confused about the disclosure.
Okay. Mike, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, so we have, each of us individually have a duty to disclose anything which might be a conflict. Not, we don't have to decide it's a major conflict and not disclose it. Otherwise, we have anything which is very minimal, according to previous rulings by the Board of Ethics, very minimal indeed. Indirect involvement with a nonprofit, not necessarily even being on a board, but donating to a nonprofit. We were, we'd been told previously, is enough to, enough of a connection to disclose. So we have a very, very low threshold for disclosure. If there isn't a disclosure, then the risk is that there can be a complaint and the item then gets effectively pulled. We have to go through an ugly process for multiple months and the work doesn't get done. If we do disclose, we as a body make the decision on whether a disclosure is significant enough. And we are responsible for that decision. And it's unlikely that gets challenged. It could get challenged, but it's unlikely. So we just have to take that responsibility and go through full disclosure. I think, I mean, I agree with the comments that in this case, it probably doesn't matter. But just going through this process, I think, gives us a degree of protection. However, the reconsideration vote goes, it shows we're taking it seriously and it's a, it's a, it's a point, I think, in our favor.
Jennifer?
I disagree. I think this is making a mountain out of a molehill. And again, I beg, we move on to the second, we're pretty waiting to have their things heard. And also, we have taken a path of great purpose with each other. And I, maybe that's a good thing, maybe it isn't, including some really pretty incredible protocol breaks by both the chairs that never knowledge or dealt with. And so if we're going to take things to this level, we're going to really open up a mess. I would like to move on.
Okay, so I think we're ready for.
I, I just heard an accusation about to break protocol from the chairs. I think that's not moving on. That's bringing up things that I don't think we've actually, we have in front of us tonight. So if you want to add that as a, if we want to discuss that, I think we should do so. I think just making it a, making an accusation like that and then never addressing it is, is inappropriate. So I'd be happy to, I would be happy to, anyway, I think either case, we have a, we have a motion in front of us. We have to vote on that. Ready?
Ready.
Sure. Mike Entington? Yes. Brian Burnett?
Uh, no.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Kelly Oknick?
No.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion fails 3-2.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for going through the process. Sorry, we couldn't have a different meeting to do it. Going to number three, election outcome.
So at this point in time, the election has not been certified, but it is, will be here in the coming week, I saw, I saw, I believe. And it looks like Kelly Oknick retained her seat and the Girdwood bond has failed. Even though it did pass within Girdwood, it didn't fail, pass with the rest of the area wide. And so the Timberline bond has failed. So, so those are the two major ones for Girdwood out effects. For the most part, it seems like incumbents have stayed the same on the assembly. And so the makeup there applies, stay the same. And then most bonds have passed throughout the city in that aspect. So that's the update from this site.
Thank you. Anything else to add from the board?
Just in terms of scheduling, normally, we, normally we do this after the certification of election. And I know we, that's normally tomorrow. So I don't have a problem doing it tonight. It's just typically we would do this later. So I think one suggestion is we may want to apply any reorganization at the end of the month because we have a bunch of stuff going on in the next week. So I'm going to, when we get to that point, I'm going to make that suggestion.
Then we'll move to the second part of three, which is annual reorganization of GBOS. And we could start with the co-chairs and responsibility, or maybe staff has a recommendation of what we've done last year that order matters?
Well, I guess the question is if you want to do that tonight, or if you want to do a special meeting or work session and then announce the new organizational setup after that. So it's, either we can do it tonight or go forward.
All right. Thank you. I think we tried to do that before.
Tried to do that before tonight, I think, didn't we?
Right. And there was no quorum, but that's why.
I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a proposal and we do this as a special meeting between now and May meeting, after the, after the certification tomorrow. Okay.
We have a motion.
Also?
Second by Jennifer. Kelly, add her hand up for a second. So anyone can chime in for discussion, have any comments?
I was just going to say the same thing. I think we should do a special meeting. Just the only option for, that we were given was tonight and it didn't work. But I don't think that means we're not interested in it generally.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay. Anything else from the body? Any objections to the motion and second? Hearing none, motion passed by consent. We'll go to number four legislative report. Senator Geese sent a report to us and I think Kai is online. If you're there, Kai, we are ready for you.
I think I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. Thanks. So thanks for a couple of minutes on the agenda. I think the, the obvious high points in terms of what's going on down here is the BSA funding and House Bill 69. We'll have a override vote tomorrow on the veto. And then we'll, we'll be going from there in terms of the education funding. I did get down Saturday when I was in town, I had a chance to look at parcel H. I found that interesting to be able to see the parcel. And I got a nice tour of the area around there and just a little more familiarity than I had just looking from, looking at pictures and the maps on there. And I also got a chance to see the Fish Culvert, both one of the new ones and the work going on there. So I have a little better appreciation of that capital project request that you've had before. Beyond that, we're just starting to look at the capital project list for this year. The Finance Committee will be starting to look at that, I think, on Wednesday. There's nothing in there from the Capsus projects that we put in. They basically zeroed those out across the state. There are a number of projects for the Seward Highway. There's continued work going on between Bird Point and McHugh Creek. They're starting some more of the planning for that longer-term, safer Seward Highway project. I'm trying to figure out exactly what's going on with this phase of funding. Some of it includes some pavement work. There's also a rockfall project at mile 113. So trying to learn more about those projects and track those as they go into finance this week for deliberations on that. And then I know some of you have been interested in the campaign finance initiative. I managed to see that one come through one of the committees I was on and helped with some of the amendments on that to make sure that would have effectiveness if it gets passed. Um, and then the renewable, uh, portfolio standard energy related projects, if anyone's interested in that. Uh, we're doing our next hearing on that on Thursday. So, uh, happy to answer any questions if you have any. Uh, lots going on here, but, uh, we'll have the next, uh, meeting in Anchorage on May third. Maybe it was in Senator Geese's report, um, at eleven o'clock in South Anchorage. Uh, there'll be details in my newsletters, but it'll be a chance to get together again. If, uh, folks are interested in, uh, seeing the weights of our eyes. So I'll pause if there's any questions.
Any questions from the board? Don't see any. Kai, thank you very much for your presence and your report tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is any assembly members online?
See anybody?
And then Carl Jacobs? In mic?
Don't see Carl.
Okay. It'll be a C report. Is Tim Sharnan here or not? There is a meeting this Thursday at thirty P M. The members have anything on that? Okay.
Well, I mean, the meeting on Thursday doesn't have any action items. That's the key.
No action items.
Yes.
Thank you. Go to supervisor reports. Anyone in the room like to start? Brian?
Nothing for me.
Jennifer, do you have? I don't think so. Okay. Mike?
Um, I think the, actually in the packet, uh, we have the, uh, response to our questions about legal opinions uh, that have been, uh, generated regarding GBOS. I don't think we're going to discuss them tonight, but they probably will come up at our, uh, meeting next week.
Thank you for bringing attention to those. Uh, Kelly, do you have an update?
Uh, we had a PSAC meeting now that we actually have a committee and largely we discussed the police contract extension. And we'll have another meeting in the near term to go into a deeper dive on that, but no substantial outcomes. But we do have a committee and we did have a meeting.
Thanks, Kelly. Great. Uh, for my reports, uh, the fire department board will have a meeting early May for their next quarterly meeting. And during the budget and finance, uh, quarter one, first quarter provisions meeting at the assembly. They mentioned Gerdwood Fire and Chugyak Fire splitting sixty-three thousand. And I'm curious to hear more about what, what it's, it says for emergencies response, but I don't know exactly what it's for. So Chief Weston will probably speak to that.
Just, uh, it is actually about sixty-three, sixty-two to sixty-four thousand each.
Each?
So, yeah, it's about a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Great. Um, and then the, it was mentioned and maybe Chief Ashay or Chief Weston could speak to it too. The dispatch with Valdez and the Bureau of Police Department was going through their transition. And that's all I have to report. Uh, so next is committee updates. Anyone in the room with a committee update? Anyone on the line? Any of the subcommittees? Other than minutes? And we'll go to standing reports page, which is in the packet. There's a couple of things that are slightly different than last month. Mike, would you like to add anything?
Yeah. I mean, just the, this, this table in the packet, it's, um, it's in monochrome, but on the, on the screen you can see the, uh, the major changes, things are moving forwards. Um, the, we, uh, did, I did add in the, uh, new water system, uh, wellhouse at the bottom. Uh, other than that, it's, uh, individual changes on particular projects.
Okay.
And is there any questions? Have to take them.
Any questions? Willam or comment?
Not, not a, uh, sorry, not a question, just, just a comment.
Go for it.
Yeah. So, uh, Will and Lori, Alias Resort, um, so just wanted to provide an update on our projects. Um, so we're changing the timing of some of the aspects of our development. Uh, this is largely due to the fact that we're getting longer and longer wait times, uh, or waiting list for staff housing. We're also getting, uh, quite a bit, bit more inquiries from other businesses in town. Um, so we're going to be proceeding with the first phase of workforce housing this summer. Uh, Little Bears is also going to happen at the same time, um, but we'll be pushing back the first phase of the village by one year. Uh, again, this is because we want to provide housing for all the other businesses that are going to be created through the village. Um, and we don't want to have all these businesses without places for people to live. Um, so this will still follow our area plan closely. We're looking at roughly sixty new units of workforce housing. Um, and it's shifting slightly, uh, just because of the wetlands permit that's still in process. So, uh, if you have any questions, uh, reach out anytime, or if you have any questions right now. Uh, yeah.
Good.
Thanks, Willam, for your report and for being here. We do have a question?
Just a quick thing, just to clarify. So the, your, the, uh, work on the current parking lot is the, um, is the, um, is the workforce housing? And then the area behind the spa is being delayed by a year. Is that the right way to?
Correct. So actually, yeah, some of the, some of the work, uh, that is happening behind the spa is going to be ongoing in terms of some infrastructure work, uh, the, the road punching out there in the parking lot. But the vertical construction, uh, won't start in that area for, for another year. Um, so just workforce housing, um, and then Little Bears as well being built, uh, in the overflow parking area.
Thank you.
I have a question. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on this chart? From the room or Mike? Okay. Go on to the next item, which is, um, is there anything on here that anyone needs to mentally? On property tax funds?
No property tax funds. I inquired last week about the, uh, information coming from STR platforms. Um, and I was told that, that we get, uh, we'd get an update sometime this week. Um, so it's still slightly, slightly too early.
Anything else?
Um, I can, yeah, I can have other good comprehensive plan quickly as well. Uh, the good comprehensive plan was approved by the assembly. Uh, there was one last formal step, which is, uh, which is a report from planning, which will, as soon as that's accepted, then the, uh, good comprehensive plan is formally adopted. Uh, that memo is on tomorrow's, well, it's not on the agenda yet, but it's on, it will be laid on the table at tomorrow's assembly meeting. So unless, assuming everything goes well, normally, um, it should be accepted as late on table item, um, incorporated in the agenda, voted on in the consent agenda tomorrow. So what that means at the end of tomorrow's assembly meeting, the good comprehensive plan should be adopted.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Finally.
Then we're on to service provider reports. Oh, Brett, thank you. Question or, or update?
Yeah, thank you, uh, for that. I just would like to, uh, maybe ask, um, in regard to STR registration. Circle back to that, you know, all that, uh, we've suggested is that that be a title twenty-one, chapter nine, uh, modification. And I did see the, some document pop up from the packet on the screen. But, um, there's some suggestion from the municipality that, uh, we would then get a sponsor either through, uh, department sponsorship, planning department, or, uh, we would, uh, seek another sponsor, say through, um, an assembly member. And that is really all that we've been counting on at some point for about a half a year now. And I don't, I, I mean, I
Brett, we lost you.
We already have the data and we're not waiting for any more data. We're waiting for a department sponsorship of title twenty-one, chapter nine changes. So that's the status.
Okay. Thank you, Brett.
Of STR. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just a general comment on that. I mean, we've, one thing has been identified in the last year and that's covered in, um, the responses from, uh, legal is that, um, GBOS can't initiate, um, we, we can't initiate change at the title twenty-one. Um, the equivalent, a similar body in Eagle River Chugyak can, but we can't. And that's kind of, I think there's general acceptance that there's something slightly wrong in that situation. And, uh, one of the things we're probably going to push for is, uh, to at least gain that power ourselves. Then we can bypass these problems of having to get someone from the assembly or the administration or department to, um, initiate title twenty-one changes, uh, when we know we want one, we could do it ourselves. So that's, I imagine with short-term rental, the, um, uh, the administration or the mayor's office is working on something. So that's probably where it will come from first. Um, but, uh, probably in, you know, hopefully in a, later on this year, by the end of this year, we'll have the ability to initiate these things ourselves. More details later.
Brett, your hand is still up. You have something else?
Yes. Uh, thank you. Just a quick follow-up. Um, yeah, I appreciate that, uh, um, what Eagle River is able to do under title twenty-one. Um, and that would be great changes. But in the meantime, uh, this has been such a long time in waiting. I'm just wondering if, uh, continuing to defer to the administration to come up with a solution that's Anchorage centric, uh, benefits Gerwood at all. Uh, we've already explored that. And I just suggest that, um, as the vetting has happened through L U C and G H U C, that we continue with the plan by engaging the department, uh, to come up with the solution that works for Gerwood, not for the municipality. Um, so thank you for that, for the chair.
Thank you, Brett. Okay. Anything else on this item? All right. We'll go then to provider reports. Chief Weston, are you online?
No, I will be filling in for Chief Weston. It's shaded.
No, I'm here. I'm here. Um, okay. Um, uh, I'll, I'll just talk about a few things that I've got the stats up there. You can scroll through the stats. Um, but, uh, I'll talk about a few other things. Uh, first is that we are increasing our staffing by one staff shift for summer season. And I'm super incredibly pleased to say that we were able to hire three Gerwood residents and one Portage residents that were currently paid on call firefighters and move them to taking more shifts over summer. So I'm super happy about that because that's really like taking service area of fire funding and, you know, investing it back in the community. So really pleased about that. Um, our Sim Mannequin, which was, uh, paid for by a federal grant, um, arrived on Monday, as did the federal government also released the funding to pay us back for that, for that, uh, mannequin. So we've been waiting for the ninety days on that. So very happy about that. Um, uh, you can see there, there's a picture of, uh, the rescue forty-one at the wildlife center's first responder day. Uh, and then that benefited, uh, dollars for dogs for A P D. Um, we had six firefighters pass firefighter two. We've currently got an E M T two class and an engineer class going on. And firefighter two was also funded by that same grant that did the Sim Mannequin. Uh, Chief Glover with A F D, the welfare chief will be at fire training tomorrow night. And we've been participating in the, uh, M O A Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Uh, we, as part, the municipality has new cardiac monitors that'll come online, um, in May first. Uh, this is an upgrade. The municipality a number of years ago moved to leasing their cardiac monitors. So it means that we all, everybody in the municipality gets new cardiac monitors every, uh, three to five years. So that's exciting. Um, looking to upgrade our CPR mannequins, uh, the new technology lets you have three people learning CPR and you turn it into a game and a race. So looking forward to bringing that to Gerwood businesses and nonprofits. And then we had, I just, uh, you might remember Chief Boss, Mike, Mike Edgington, uh, brought the idea of doing a, uh, tax credit for volunteer firefighters for Chigek and Gerwood, um, to the municipality and it was approved. And I'm pleased to say that we had four Gerwood paid on call firefighters that took advantage of this. Um, so that was good. And I think that's it. I did, I think I mentioned, maybe I didn't, uh, we had a, we did a plane crash response. Um, the other week, uh, we did transport people. There were no, um, and, uh, yeah. And we did an avalanche response. That was sort of the more interesting things that have happened. Uh, March was, uh, pretty busy for us, uh, but the normal sort of amount of calls around thirty, thirty-two calls. Um, and then April, April and October usually are slowest months. Um, and, uh, there, it's right tracking, right where it's always been slow. So, um, any questions for me?
Mike?
A quick question. I see on this, um, you have M C T one, that's mobile crisis team, I think. Is that the, when you're, um, when you're requesting that support, are you getting it?
Um, yes, asterisks. Uh, yes, definitely. Um, and so what happens is, uh, if, uh, if A F D will actually triage the call when it's called into nine-one-one into, uh, M C T. Uh, and then, uh, sometimes those calls, you know, that's a very popular program. And it might be stacked, so it will be in call stack. Um, and so when a provider is available, they'll usually phone into the, uh, location and the person who might be having a behavioral health crisis and talk to them. And then they'll also make an assessment with us, um, to, in terms of coming down. And when they do come down, they come down with a, um, a provider, a mental health provider or clinician, and then also a paramedic, and they're able to transport people as well, um, in an S U V. So wonderful program. Um, but it is super popular and, you know, you, we might see the program get called and, you know, it might be in stack, which might take a while for, um, for somebody to be available.
So when you said asterisk, do you mean asterisk for everybody within the municipality? Or do we get two asterisks, uh, because of our location?
Well, we're, uh, you know, there's, there's one, uh, on-call group, I believe, uh, or, uh, you know, um, one, I think it's one, uh, team available at any given time. And so, yeah, we're in stack with everyone else. And, and just like every other call, it's triaged, right? Uh, so it's triaged. So, um, yeah.
But it's not triage based on location or is triage based on location? I'm just trying to, it is not.
Yeah, not triaged, not triaged based on location. Um, but, you know, oftentimes they are already on a call. So you have to wait for them to clear the call before they'll go on the next call.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Uh, oh, and I'll let Chief Ashay talk about, uh, the transition to Valdez Dispatch. Um, since it is a police contract issue, um, we, uh, did reach out proactively to Valdez and just said hello. Um, and then, and extended an invitation to the Valdez dispatchers, uh, to come over and, uh, tour the service area if they want, um, so we can help them, uh, see the service area. But I'm sure Chief Ashay will cover all of this.
Okay. Thank you. Or Kyle?
Yeah. See, they can't be here tonight, so I'll cover it. Um, so here's the stats, uh, for, uh, uh, for maybe P D between here and Whittier. And so it's split apart there. Um, but yeah, I think the big key thing tonight is that, um, the dispatch is switching from SICA to, uh, um, Valdez and they will be handling the dispatch for Whittier P D. And, um, which I think is a, is a real positive, uh, as they are Prince William Sound based. Uh, they're a larger organization and, uh, probably better funded. Um, and they have a lot of, uh, interaction already with the state troopers and, um, in the region. So, and also one thing that, uh, became very apparent, uh, was when, uh, the fiber optic line was getting cut down in southeast. Uh, that was affecting the services. They were having to go to backup satellite communication, uh, which wasn't as reliable. And here they have, uh, once again, fiber optic within Prince William Sound and also, uh, uh, fiber optic feeding Valdez over land. So, um, it makes them twice as strong as, on their communication level on that aspect. Uh, but it does come with a price tag and both of the, uh, they went out for R F P. And both of the people who did bid on it on the second round, they're a thousand dollars apart. Um, but it's about a thirty to forty thousand dollar increase, um, which will most likely be split between the two communities to cover that cost. Um, what's been fortunate for Gerwood for many years is that currently our current contract rates with them are, we're still paying for the rates that when we were with Cordova Dispatch, which was quite a bit cheaper. Um, so they have, uh, actually eaten the cost for a couple of years here when they went over to SICA, um, in that aspect. So, um, but they are making the transition and they should by, hopefully by the first week of May be fully over with Valdez. And, uh, Chief Ashay is arranging for, uh, their dispatchers to come over and, uh, visit and get the note, the both communities. Um, it's just a complicated issue because when they come by ferry, it's a four-day turnaround for the next ferry that goes back. So, um, so they have to be careful about how they make that work and the expense associated with it. So, so we'll hopefully get to see some of them over. And then as may, uh, dispatchers come to Anchorage, um, via ferry, they can do some visits that way, uh, when they're coming for, uh, private trips. So, um, so that's working out. Uh, we did meet with the Public Safety Advisory Committee and had a discussion about the contracts. And, um, in the contract renewal, we're, we're ending the three-year, uh, period and looking at renewing with the two-year extension. Um, they make it a total of five years. And then, uh, as drawn out in the contract, that'd be a seven and a half percent increase in the rate, um, but it still keeps us at a flat rate for the next two years. So, so we will work that through the Public Safety Advisory Committee and then we'll bring it to GBOS, um, once we get a, uh, opinion and motion out of the Public Safety Advisory Committee there. So, so those are the few things going on. Uh, the big thing this week is Slush Cup. So, uh, we're preparing for that. Uh, we creating a temporary impound yard, uh, Whittier will be full. Whittier will be fully staffed and responsive to it and, and ready to go. So see how it goes. Should we go, should we go, should go great. So, so that's the update from Leece.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, on to roads and.
Sure. We keep our report here in here, so we'll start touching the highlights and keep things moving along. We have, after many returns of winter there, the best week of winter we had. We get back into spring and so we have our crew on. We brought them on early this year and they're off and running. A big project that will be happening over the next week is we're going to do the rebuild on the new dugouts there for the baseball field with funds raised, fundraised through the Slade and Mole Fund. So we'll get that going this week. Should be pouring slabs on Wednesday for the new dugouts. And then the crew is working through a host of projects to get up and renting, mostly working closely and then we'll be moving out the trails as conditions allow and getting out there. So I'm excited to have them and Luke and John, you'll see them out there. They are third year with us, so they're, they're very seasoned now and they know a lot of the things that we need to have done. So it's really nice to have that crew back with us out there working. So we have a list of projects within the reporting. And if anybody had any questions with them, they can always let me know. As always, we are working through our grants and we'll be kicking off Recreation Trails Program Grant, RTP Grant with the Alaska Trails. And we work on the middle dinner rod, making right away, going through the whole trail, making drainage improvements, cleaning out existing ranges, creating drainage where we need them. And then we'll be returning back through the work on tread work, take out rotten boardwalk, build some new bridges that are in pretty bad shape and put a lot of work into that middle section this year. So they will be starting with us in June and getting that project going. So we're, we're excited for that, that aspect. And then we're also working on a land water conservation grant with, for the rebuilding, our building of a new pavilion in Lions Club Park. So we're still waiting on direction for that, that funding. We hope that's not part of the clawback, but we heard that the money is there. So, so we'll be working through that. And the Lions Club itself has raised about $25,000 towards the project. So that's, it's going to be a great matching grant to get that, that project completed. So we'll work through those as we go. So it's always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our social media and websites up to date with information there and all the links here if you want to find anything that you're looking for. Switching over the roads, you know, following that great dose of snow, then followed by three and a half inches of rain in 72 hours. We're back into spring conditions and the crews are, got through most of the roads this last week and tried to give a grade on them. And then as conditions dry out, we'll be jumping into spring grading and then applying calcium and, and getting them ready for the summer. And then we're going to switch over to drainage projects. The first projects we'll get to is in Old Town on Old West. We're going to start down there right away. And then we're going to clean out ditch lines throughout Old Town and work with in that area. And then we'll move up valley from there with different projects going on. The Davos Fish Colvert Project will get going here in the coming weeks. We have a sort of pre-construction meeting with them. They've already been out to cut down the, the trees that we're, need to be removed from the area before the bird nesting began. So that has been taken care of. And then just this week, we approved the new cement structures that being created and Anchorage should be brought down that, that the culvert will sit on. And so they'll get going on that probably about mid-May in that aspect. So we'll be moving into more of the drainage and road maintenance projects in early June, once we get through the spring work and going that direction. And then budget wise, we're all, we're, we are where we need to be. Only 12% spent so far on roads, 3% on parks, which is normal because we don't really spend a lot of that until we get in the summer. Police at 10%, fire at 17%. So everything is where it needs to be as we're getting the second quarter of work here. And then here we have some other meeting reminders. We'll at some point work with you guys on getting scheduled your one and three year plans, rules and procedures. We want to do an end of year budget review. Now, most likely sometime in May with you, just go over the finances from '24 and show you where we ended up on the different accounts. And then as always, we'll start the budget process in later summer. So just an overview of the different things going on. So I'll open up any questions.
For Belle?
I wonder if you have any perspective or read on the vote from the Girdwood, the Girdwood part of the Timberline Road?
Well, there's definitely good support for it. It passed 60, 30% or like maybe let's say 50 or 58, you know, 32. But it was, you know, we saw support here and, you know, which is encouraging. It doesn't solve the funding issue though, you know? And so that, that's just the issue that we run into is raising the capital funds. You know, we slowly do it through contributions and, you know, that's how we were funding the Davos project right now, but it took us five years to get there. And so projects like that. We will put some, some effort into that section of road this year because we did get down pretty close to the, to the subsurface there. And we were starting to pull up some fairly large rock. So we will put some material in there. It was, which is funny is that we had such a rough winter. We put so much material in there to fix the potholing when it all melted out. It was like, wow, we got a lot of good material again. So, so we need to replace culverts along there. We didn't do it last year. We cleaned the ditch lines, but we didn't replace the culverts. So we need to get in there and take care of that. But it was positive to see the community was behind it. It just gets lost in that messaging to Anchorage, how they have, you know, you can write it in there and probably bold print and people just don't read past the first headline or the title. So, so we'll have to find other ways to fund it. And I think that's going to be a larger discussion with the board and a mechanism for finding capital funds that, that can help with Girdwood as it, as it grows, the infrastructure needs to be maintained. So.
That's, thank you very much, Kyle. Ready for public comments. Person offering public comment must take their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone would like to have a comment, please come forward or we have one online. So Willam, go for it. Willam is.
Yeah, I just wanted to, sorry, name and address, Willam Laurie, Aliaska Resort. I just wanted to quickly acknowledge some comments that were made towards the Aliaska Development Team during the last GBOS meeting. It was something regarding our company sending out some mugs. We obviously didn't do this. My team didn't do this. And everything that was stated was untrue. It's extremely disappointing to hear this kind of accusation from a member of the community. We will continue to make every effort we can to work with GBOS and other community organizations with the development. But just really disappointing to be accused of this when it's completely untrue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Amanda?
All right. Hi, Amanda Tuttel here. I'm representing my business today as I speak and myself personally as an old Girdwood resident.
Could you name your business just?
Yes, Post Pizza. The community has the right to be informed. Girdwood Board of Supervisors is a community advisory council, not a gatekeeper. This community has been, this community has been bamboozled and led astray by the leadership within this board. The leadership is responsible for the lack of public process complacency and public notification on land disposals within this valley and has aided in the exploitation of our community. We are state public lands and the public process has not been followed. The leadership is responsible for why Holton Hills went through. And now the leadership is responsible for the inclusion of the 77 acre parcel that will divide and deteriorate our trail system that supports our local economy that prospers the pockets of Pomeroy. The amendment requested by Mike Edgington and Imagine Girdwood is not compliant. In fact, nowhere within the amendment are the state's perpetual land use easements or even a map that actually shows the state or federal lands within this valley. This is municipal overreach. That's putting the carriage in front of the horse with, with land use policy. MOA land disposals cannot supersede Alaska statutes or negate federal law. However, the leadership in Imagine Girdwood hired Huddle Consulting, who are not state of Alaska regulatory specialists or experienced in state land use planning. They are park architects. Our leadership was so excited over the passing of the non-compliant amendment, knowing fair and well that that 77 acre parcel we can go with it, that he brought a cake to celebrate. This non-compliant amendment was shanghaied and will cause environmental disasters in this community. Why weren't you screaming? You were supposedly our advisory leadership to protect the property and lives of local residents. Instead, you brought a cake while I cried walking to my truck. In fact, where were you during the HLB meeting in February when they tried to sneak this parcel into their annual work plan, further expediting the illegal disposal of Pomeroy? Nowhere around. You're supposedly leading for us. You seem to only tell a few individuals what was occurring. That's not advising the community. That's aiding in our exploitation. You do not support the local residents or businesses in this community. In fact, everything you seem to do is in direct opposition of the local community and local businesses, particularly those of us in old Girdwood and Crow Creek, the two communities at statehood who have been written out of our own land use policy. In fact, Crow Creekers can't even vote here at GBOS, yet you control the access. Old Girdwood, you are flooding and are only one atmospheric storm away from causing a statewide and federal emergency. Yet this leadership keeps on aiding on the illegal land disposals of our public lands to foreign entities. I am over the hardships you have personally created for me and I resent you every day I close my restaurant doors or forced to reduce my hours due to your mismanagement in this valley. I am over the exploitation of my community at the expense of business property safety. I have the support of every Girdwood Shopping Center business owner and we agree that Girdwood Board of Supervisors is in direct opposition to the vitality of our businesses.
Any other public comment tonight? Okay, next, old business. We hit it 20, so we're going to number 12, Karen. For the Forest Fair request, please come forward.
Okay, trying not to take up too much time. I'm Karen Zakar. I'm here representing Girdwood Forest Fair tonight. I am the Girdwood Forest Fair Secretary. And we are asking for a letter of non-objection, or I like to say a letter of support, whatever you want to call it, for our fair to happen this July 4th, 5th and 6th. It's our 50th Annual Forest Fair. And we are also requesting a confirmation of the waiver of the park fee tonight. I wanted to, we can talk about whatever details you want to talk about. Basically, it's all the same as last year. So I can go over that if you want to. But I also, I wanted to, I want to read our mission statement as short. And I wanted to highlight a few of the people in our community that are kind of the core leaders of the Forest Fair. So I'll read the mission statement first. Girdwood Forest Fair mission is to showcase the best of Alaska's arts, crafts, music and food in a free, family-friendly event. It's a community event run solely by volunteers and supported by patrons aiming to be environmentally conscious and free of moral conflicts. The fair strives to be a venue that does not prioritize greed or profit over community benefit. And so that's, that is what we're trying to do. And we try to have fun too. But I want to just remind everybody that Girdwood Forest Fair started out as a fundraiser for Little Bears 50 years ago and evolved into a big festival that still supports, still is a nonprofit, still is run by volunteers and still gives back to the community in their taking care of the park and in, I think last year we gave away over $40,000 to local nonprofits. So sometimes people come to Girdwood and they think we are, I don't know, some kind of profit entity and we're not. And so I want to kind of highlight all the things that so many people in the community do. And we have over 200 volunteers from the community that come out to spend a good part of their weekend sharing Girdwood with the rest of the world. So, and we really appreciate everybody that does that. I wanted to also just point out, we do have a real board. We're a real nonprofit. We have a board. We have meetings. And I wanted to make sure you kind of knew who those people were. And then just highlight a couple. We have, so we have a board, we have a standing committee and all those people work their butts off all year long to put on the fair. And then we have another 200 people that show up to, you know, do all the things that you see. So Mike Ingersson is our board president. He's the one that kind of keeps things chill during the fair weekend. Terry Atkins is our vice president. She is also the PR person for Girdwood Forest Fair. She is the only person authorized to speak for Forest Fair, except the exception they make for me to come talk to you. So if you want to know what Girdwood has to say, you have to talk to Terry. I'm the secretary and I kind of help out with security on the weekend of the fair. Connie Cooley, who runs the tourist trap, she is our treasurer. And she also runs the kids booth during the fair. Sally Messy is our T-shirt booth coordinator. Bob Messing takes care of the park. He's the forest keeper. And he's also recently retired 23 years on the Girdwood Fire Department. So he keeps us all safe in lots of ways. Eric Long is probably the only person that maybe works as hard as Bob. And he's in the beer garden and does a lot of building, taking down, taking care of things. Ty Lee Bell has been here for a very long time. And she is former president and now takes care of booth coordination. And Shyne Herfindal, who hopefully you all have had the pleasure to meet, is a force that is all meant for fun now. She takes care of games, kid stage and parade. And then we have another, I just want to read their names off because they're great people in our community that do a lot of the, the core work throughout the year. Matt Bailey, SJ Klein, Mike Ovia, Lisa Miles, Shannon and Brian Noonan, Adam Lees, Brian and Kasia Holloman, Kath McDermott, Paula and Jeff Bogdan, Bree Wong, Shayla Colott and her two daughters, Maya and Sierra, have been helping out a lot last few years, Hannah Chandler and Tommy O'Malley. So hopefully everyone heard some names they recognized. And these people are really doing a lot of work every, every year, every month. And we appreciate it. And also we're super supportive by all the businesses in the community. We have a lot of partners through our Anchorage and the Girdwood community. So it all comes together and it benefits the nonprofits and it also benefits our whole community as a four season resort. We're a four season resort because we have skiing and a festival and trails and a tram that'll take you up and great dining. We have a lot of, a lot to offer people from our community and everywhere else. So as far as like the logistics of what's going on for the fair this year, basically everything like last year, a few more security people. And it is going to be the 4th of July. So we are pushing the bus a little harder. We're going to have the bus again. And, yeah, we're going to eat our Wheaties. So I will take any questions or thoughts on.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to thank you for the thorough reports in the packet. And I always appreciate the efforts for recycling and the water bottle filling stations, cups and.
Yeah, the quads.
The more opportunity for people to recycle, the, the better it will be and the less trash there will be. Our town beautiful and the park clean. So I know there's ferries helping with that constantly, but.
And Parks and Rec has been an awesome partner.
Quick question. What weather have you scheduled for that weekend?
I would, I'm not going to admit what kind of weather. I'm hoping.
If anyone has questions, it's probably in that, in that segment of packet. So, thank you Karen again. Thank you for attending. And then we will need a motion.
A serious question. You mentioned at the beginning something about a letter of support rather than a letter of non-objection. We have non-objection in here.
Right, I think we do ask for a letter of support.
Okay.
Yeah.
GBOS, our standard is always easy with your default is letter of non-objection, resolution of support. So if you want to do a letter of support, you can. We can change the language to make that work.
Great. Brian, I entertain a motion if you want and make it for the, since your name's on here.
So I would move that, that we write a letter of support for the Girdwood, for the 50th Girdwood Forest Fair. So we'd make the edit up there, change from a letter of non-objection to a letter of support. We could, or it's a resolution of support.
It's a letter.
Yeah, a letter of support. And then no objection to the 50th Girdwood Forest Fair general permitting and site plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconds. Any discussion?
Do you want to attack on the fee waiver at the same time? Do you want to attack on the fee waiver at the same time?
Is that?
It's in there, right off.
Okay, great.
I think it's all.
Okay.
All included.
Thank you whoever grabbed it.
Um, and maybe the dates will be written. We update it every year, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, for information, the, um, just to clarify, you, you said we changed from letter of non objection to letter of support. Um, you mentioned about adding in the fiftieth.
Yeah, right, so. Has no objection.
The fiftieth.
Girdwood Forest Fair.
Is it no objection or support? Um, supports the.
Supports, oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Supports the fiftieth Forest Fair.
I'll just formally make that amendment, I'll propose an amendment to, uh, just add in the support um, after G B O S regular meeting in body.
Thanks for catching.
Fiftieth Forest, fiftieth Girdwood Forest Fair.
Okay, and Brian seconds that amendment, okay, great. Any objection to that amendment? All right, by consent, that amendment passes, and then we'll go back to the motion on the floor, which is letter of support with the fiftieth. Any objection to that motion? We can also do a roll call, just so our numbers are on there.
Sure, okay, Mike Edgerton, yes, Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknik?
Yes.
Veronica Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, very much.
Thank you.
Be here before we know it, so now to number nine, bills in the state legislative session.
Yeah, um, so as I mentioned at the beginning, um, property tax exemption, A B thirteen, we have fast resolution last month. Uh, the other, the other one funding source for workforce housing is not like, is stuck in, um, committee and isn't likely to go anywhere, so I'm going to suggest we, uh, we just postpone this item, definitely. Now, we've already acted on the first part, so we can just drop this from the agenda.
We need a second for that?
Well, six.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any other discussion or objection to the postponement? Okay, item is postponed indefinitely, and we are ready for number ten. Girdwood Airport Parcel H, follow up on letter to the meeting, which is in our packet from Mike and.
Yeah, so we're not actually considering this item today, this is because we voted to not to reconsider, so this is just going to be a informational call up.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yes, but the, um, last time we had a, we had a draft letter, there was a suggestion we should make a couple of revisions and send it around, and we have made the revisions. Uh, Jennifer, I did that, so it is in the packet, so it's just there for information.
Thank you both for doing that.
There was, there was also a, uh, a request that came from, um, land use, um, about uh, rescinding the, um, rescinding the lease of parcel H. Uh, we've not, uh, we, that isn't in this letter, this letter was just to the M O A. Uh, that would be kind of a, a new item which we could potentially take up tonight, or, uh, or act on at a later date.
Okay. Um, thank you. This was, this was sent though, to the meeting, right?
No, it hasn't, we just, uh, we revised it, we just wanted to make sure, in case we were going to revisit the item tonight, we wanted to make sure it was in front of everyone. But unless there's objections, we can, uh, we can go forward and send it. This is, this is the one that you, uh, you're incorporating your changes, Jennifer.
Right, I'm sorry, I was just checking, uh, about what you mentioned about land use, um, and I just want to make sure that we're not out of step with land use, uh, because I thought everyone said their wording being a little bit strong, or and it's, it is that piece about asking the police be rescinded, and so, um, so if we don't include that in the letter, then we have to circle back.
Yeah, I think the way I'd say it is, we have, we were, we would have done two different letters, one for the, one for the M O A, which is the one here, and then the other one is to, um,
Oh, the D O T.
The D O T to rescind, so that, since we're not actually considering this item anymore, I guess we should have, perhaps we should have put this into two parts, um, and just voted on, um, reconsideration of the first part. Um, so yeah, actually, so I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that, um, we, we had, we separately addressed, we've kind of dealt with what we did last.
Right, we consider that finished.
So perhaps we should consider that finished, unless there are any objections to this letter. And then we should have a new item, uh, which is, um, a considering a letter to rescind the lease on parcel H to D O T.
All right.
So that would be a new item for the agenda, which we can either do now or do it after fourteen.
Just, I brought up the minutes from, uh, L U C, and you can see the motion that was passed there, what they requested was the G B O S.
To keep it, to keep it simple, it's not simple, but to keep it clean, I'd suggest that's a new, that's a new item, we should add to tonight's agenda.
Under old business, though.
Under old business, yes, because it's similar enough.
And Kai has had his hand up, and I don't know if he has something that's really tied to this item, so Kai, I'll go with you next.
Well, thank, thank you for recognizing the hand up, um, yeah, I was very interested in the update, but it sounds like I can just wait and listen to the additional action you're going to take on this, because I am, uh, looking forward to getting those letters, so I have a clear understanding or position on what I can do to help out with this, but I, I, I'll wait for the additional discussion it sounds like you're going to have on this issue.
Okay, thank you Kai, and Steve, just to mention something, for help, we're simple.
Yeah, thank you. If I could take just a couple minutes, um, thanks for taking our, uh, comments over and over again. I'm kind of here representing our group.
And this is on, what we're going to.
This is on this letter, I think. Is that done already, the letter that's drafted?
Yeah, we just decided it's done.
Oh.
So, um, well.
Can I address it?
You haven't done official vote yet.
Oh, that's true.
So it's, I don't know if it's.
I didn't hear, did I, I didn't know we had, we did the official vote last month.
Oh, last month.
So we wouldn't edit it after this, at this point, but I.
So you don't get any input to this letter?
Um, as chair, I would like to hear what you have to say, and it was last month already that we tasked our two members to write the letter, so that was the chance to talk to, to those members.
Okay.
But, um, we want to write, it sounds like, a new one about rescinding the lease to, different to D O T, not.
Okay.
That changes your mind?
No.
Okay.
Here's the confusion, we tried to get with people about the letter, and we were told it was put off because of something of conflict of interest, or we didn't understand, or we never heard back, so I'm here tonight, this is really close.
Okay.
So, um, just on page two, if it's possible, um, where it says it is abundantly clear that daily helicopter operation within a few feet of homes is contrary to public health. That was, uh, really strong words from Senator Geese, and I'm glad they're here, but what, what we like and what she said is is abundantly clear that aircraft operation, because really, it's, it's an airplane or a, or a helicopter. So if that's possible, and then based on, um, L U C and all the conversations we've had, um, we would like you to consider a fourth bullet point here on page two. And the idea would be a letter going to, uh, D O T, Representative Holland came down, and it was great to walk with him, we really appreciated that, sir. Um, if a letter goes to D O T through, um, Representative Holland's office and Senator Geese's, but if it's also addressed by M O A in both letters, it, it kind of, both sides are working together on the same thing. And I have some language if you're, if you're at all interested, or if it's too late, um, either way, I'd like to read it. Uh, it says, so a fourth bullet point to say that the lease offer for parcel H be rescinded by AKA D O T and P F, as it does not meet any of the goals outlined in the new Girdwood Comprehensive Plan or the current state Girdwood Airport Master Plan. It's just real simple. Um, this way, this way, I mean, that's really the goal of this, is here, use the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, and kind of start using that for the whole airport thing, we, we feel like this is a bigger than just a neighborhood deal, this is kind of all of Girdwood. Um, if, if the airport just keeps growing and growing, it's going to be, it's going to be noisy. And, and the aircraft are going to be flying low over the homes, um. I, I've seen what happens to the Mendenhall area in June, since I fly in and out of there a lot, and I just don't want that to happen. Um, I think the city can stand up, is that something that we can get into this letter, do you think?
Jennifer? Oh, let me just do a quick parliamentary moment here.
Okay.
Uh, if I may, uh, so I think we have a motion on the table right now, that's about something separate, but it hasn't been seconded, and I wonder if we could rescind it for the moment, and then, is, is that okay? And then, because I was going to second it, but, and then, uh, procedurally, I, I, I think we could address the aircraft versus helicopter, I believe that that is a clerical correction and not a substantive.
I think we'll say it's clerical.
Okay, all right, so we can, done and dusted?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then I will let the board talk about the other bit.
Okay, thank you for bringing the attention to the motion on the floor, and that item is basically ten B.
Yeah.
That we want to discuss next.
Yes.
Um, I think the, so Kay, can I address?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the, um, I take a point about the, um, about the comprehensive plan, the point of this letter is that as far as D O T is concerned, they don't care about the comprehensive plan, it doesn't apply to them. Uh, they have no interest in it, it's completely irrelevant, they see everything around land use, which includes comprehensive plan, as being not applicable to them, so this letter is about the M O A standing up and saying, they're under, they believe it is. Um, the, the subsequent answer, the subsequent argument about using it as a, you know, it being a justification for actions is kind of the second step, the first step is to make sure the M O A clearly stands up and says, um, yes, there is, that the M O A has an interest in land use, um, on this land, uh, for non-aviation purposes. So that was the, that was the purpose of trying to delineate these two issues, but I mean, I, I take a point about the helicopter, that's, that's a fine change.
We, we feel though, if the M O A right from the beginning knows what, I mean, it's a real clear goal. We're hoping you'd consider putting that in there, just because of the M O A, they deal with a lot of things, I know, so this would just be a real clear goal. And I can, maybe Representative Holland, um, can speak to it, but I think we have support at the state level for the D O T. I think the sooner D O T starts hearing that the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan is part of the Anchorage Municipal Plan, it's not just Girdwood. Um, I think the better, and I think that's what we're getting, is support at the state level, um, to get D O T to start thinking that way. So I think the more, the more it's written, the more everybody reads it, rather than just waiting for later. But that's what I hope you, you'd consider.
Thank you.
Am I speaking out of turn, Representative Holland?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm on board.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Okay, so, um, first of all, I, what I have, I was probably part of any confusion here, so, uh, I know that we were trying to be really careful about O M A, and um, we've been talking about it a lot, so I'm sorry if you guys felt like we're getting representative there. Um, I do, I, I wonder if we could just kind of float the idea on this board that what, what they're asking for in that other bullet point strikes me as basically just another, another way of saying what we've already said. Um, I, I don't know that it's strictly speaking clerical, and I understand that we've already voted on this, um. So I'd kind of like to hear other thoughts from the board, but one, this, this question about whether or not we stay a specific, if I'm understanding correctly, specifically stating that we believe the lease should be rescinded, that's the fourth bullet point, correct? But it, it kind of follows naturally from what we've already said, like this is consistent with our, our code, so it seems a little bit like already stated what we already said, but I'm interested in the word.
Kelly, stand up.
I'm, I don't disagree with the, the points that, um, remember Jennifer just said that it seems to flow fine, but, um, and then the clerical error, error is just getting a little bit more tricky to address this letter, um, today. But I would really like to write another one, even more succinct like Geese's, that says to, to ask to rescind it to the same people and to D O T, and that, this, uh, this is still relevant, but it's not as new as it was three weeks ago to, to get it out. So we all wanted to send it, um, but maybe we could do another one, too?
Can I suggest we, um, I mean, that this is part of the reason for reconsideration, and, uh, I know we, we, that vote was not passed by three to two, but if it had been passed, then we'd be able to go in and change this letter, but I think the, I think just from a climate standpoint view, we should send this, move on to the next item, and then the next item, we can send a letter to a broader number of people and make the very points about rescinding. So I think that's just simpler where we are now. Given that we're not, we, we're not going back and reconsidering this item anymore.
Right, we voted to reconsider. Uh, Kelly, and then Jennifer?
Yeah, um, my recollection from the last meeting was that the letter was going to be modified and then circulated for approval, and if people had things to say, that, and then that was put on hold. So are we still going to circulate before sending, or is that canceled, or fill me in on, on the process piece of this, please?
That's a good question. Sorry.
I can try, I think the, I think the situation is that because we, what we were going to do was because there was disagreement about the wording of the letter, we were going to revise it, send it around, and then open up the twenty-four hours reconsideration at that point. Um, we ended up reconsidering anyway, so, um, the, so that window affected, that effectively that process got short-circuited, the option, the opportunity to go in and re-discuss it was on item two earlier, and we voted that down, so we already made the decision that we're not going to, uh, we're not going to reconsider this, this is really just an informational item.
But, but we didn't, we didn't carry forward with the commitment that was made at the last meeting, and upon which the vote, you know, was contingent, so I don't think we can just surpass the promise to allow reading and commenting, even if it's been a long time, I don't. I mean, that was.
We can't use that mechanism, because there's one opportunity of reconsideration if we use that, and, um, and there's been, there was a decision earlier this meeting not to reconsider, so we're not going back and changing the decision from last time. And this letter.
The decision last time was to approve the letter contingent upon reading the final version and agreeing on it within twenty-four hours, so the letter was rewritten, but it was never recirculated, and the commitment to allow comment with, and twenty, within twenty-four hours was never upheld, so this seems like a, a violation of process to me.
Okay.
We didn't, what we.
Thank you, Kelly, your, your points are taken.
The, so there was an opportunity to reconsider it at the beginning of this meeting, we had a vote on that, and three people voted not to reconsider it, so we as a board have made that decision. I, I'm confused as to why, we, I mean, if you, if you wanted to reconsider it, there was an opportunity to do so at the beginning of this meeting, and the decision was, as a board, we decided not to. So we did have our opportunity to.
Why promises were made in the last meeting and they weren't upheld, so if you can just explain to me why the promise made in the last meeting was not upheld, then that would be enough, I just don't understand why it wasn't.
Okay, Jennifer, do you like to answer?
Yeah, I think we might have a slight, um, misunderstanding, I'm, I'm not, not sure, but uh, I understood our reconsideration vote to be specifically about reopening our approval of the letter. I actually, I, I agree with Kelly's reading on this, that we weren't, we're not reopening the approval of the letter, we are continuing the process that we started last month. Uh, so there, we're not going back and voting on the letter altogether, but we still have same agreement, we, I, I mean, I kind of feel like we've reset the clock a little bit back to where we were, but back to square one, where we would have been, um, had other issues not arisen after that last Monday meeting vote, but, uh, Brian, you weigh in, I guess.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, it, on, on hearing the, um, comments from, from the neighborhood and from the group, if I would have known those comments were out there, my vote would have been different on the, um, the request for reconsideration, to, to know that, that the reconsideration vote was closing access to this document, and I, I don't, I don't, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time reconciling how our access to this document is now closed. Only it, perhaps it's only a procedural issue, um, which means that we can probably figure out how to get around a procedural issue, but.
I.
Got a, a suggestion, so, um, what I suggest, I'm going to make a motion that we rescind the rules or under reconsideration, uh, for the purposes of this item in this discussion. uh, for the purposes of this item in this discussion.
Uh, Kyle and Margaret.
Just staff perspective, we're confused. Um, so the reconsideration, wasn't the reconsideration vote on the motion there that passed four zero to reconsider that motion?
Just to reconsider the item, yes.
So, but the motion states that this would be reviewed and possibly reconsidered. So the motion still stands, right?
But there is one opportunity to reconsider and we've used that up. So that's why I'm going to suggest the suspension of the rules if someone would second that. And then we can, we can make a discussion.
But if the reconsider was passed, then that motion would be failed, right? Or be reconsidered for, for it.
Can I just ask, my motion, can I get seconded too?
I think someone was about to second it. Jennifer, Mike.
I'm uh, not going to second that. I disagree. I, I think that we have a, um, we have one member and possibly more um, with a, a set idea about this process, but we also have other ideas about this parliamentary process in the room. And I don't feel like anyone, I mean, maybe we need to vote on our understanding of the parliamentary process, but I disagree that one person gets to declare what it is, what's right and what's going to, how this is going to be interpreted. We have several members interpreting this, including staff. So I would like that viewpoint to be heard automatically.
Thank you. Okay, so staff, um, please say what you said again. And I feel like that makes sense to me, the way that, that you said it.
So the, the way I interpreted the reconsideration was to look, reconsider the vote that was taken on this motion, the last motion after the meeting was done. That reconsideration was not considered. So that motion still stands, which means that the uh, the letter can still be reviewed and possibly reconsidered by the board. And so at this point, it sounds like, and that's why I said we didn't have a vote on this because I didn't feel like we had finished the approval of the letter. Um, because it never went out for a 24 hour review process. And that's usually what will happen at the board. You'll send it out and if somebody has objection to the content of the letter, the objection was to the vote and the non-disclosure, which was a separate item from the letter. So at this point, it seems like the letter is still open for reconsideration and amendment or editing.
Thank you, Kyle. I feel like that explanation does, oh, my understanding of this, because it is getting pretty complicated and I don't want to make this process later.
So I'm going to, I'm going to try again. So my suggestion is, I think there's, there's the risk that we go down a path that we don't want to use as a precedent. So I think there's a simple way of doing this, which is just to suspend the rules, make up a special rule for the case we have now. And then we're not setting any, setting up anything is going to cause us more harm in the future. Because I think it's clear what we all want to do. I just think we just need to make it, you know, just make it really clear that we want, we want to say what we want to do now. Ignore, not ignore, but we don't have to be consistent with other things in the past. We just want to do it one off now. So I, again, make a motion that we suspend the rules for this item so we can just deal with it directly without having potentially some other complexity to prove.
Right.
Motion's made.
Motion is made and it needs to be seconded if we want to vote on it.
Second motion.
Right. I have a comment, but it's not exactly on the motion. It's related to the motion. I think that we can make a new motion on this letter at this meeting. And even if it was made last month, I feel like I read that in rubber tools. And you're allowed to, I think you're allowed to do that. We can, uh.
Can I speak to, I speak to the motion?
Yes.
So the motion in front of us is rather than going around circles of what we've, what we did and what we, uh, what's consistent with that rule last time, we simply put all that to one side, decide what we're going to do with this now, but then move forward.
Jennifer?
I guess I'm just confused on why it's necessary. I don't feel we're suspending rules or anything else. I think we're, we're right on protocol, actually. So I think this motion is unnecessary. And I, I don't like the idea of us making motions to waive rules. It just sounds bad when in fact that's not actually what we're doing. We're just sticking with, we're just sticking with parliamentary process. It's got confusing, it got convoluted, but it's still there. The, the bones are still there and they're, they're all right.
Any other comments? Quickly.
And why not? I agree with Jennifer. Why not? Why is what the community wants advisory council? This simple add.
Okay, board ready for roll call vote on the motion on floor?
Uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Kelly Aknik?
Can you clarify exactly what the motion is that's being voted on? Because I'm so confused now.
Uh, essentially, they're suspending the rules to uh, with the reconsideration vote, which might have closed the reconsideration of this letter.
For the purpose of making the changes that are being requested.
Reopening the letter so it can be amended.
I'm so confused. no.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes three to. Okay.
Okay, so now we can talk about the letter.
Do what you want.
All right. We'd like to make a motion to add the fourth bullet point.
Me.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion been seconded and you, you could make it perfect.
You want to, you're not going first, Jennifer? On the fourth bullet point.
Uh, for the board, we request that the lease for parcel H and DOT be rescinded.
Yeah, well, because this is to the, to uh, MOAs, it would be to work with, yeah.
And PNF.
Yes, well, to work with DOT and.
Is that, uh, sorry, does that match your word?
It does. I was just going to bring up the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan since this letter is to the municipality of Anchorage. And we were just going to remind them that there is airport-specific language in the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan portion of Title 21. And they may not be aware of that. I'm laughing as I say that. I'm sure they're not aware of that. It's just to help them.
Yep.
And also I think it's helpful that the municipality knows it's not part of the Girdwood State Airport Master Plan as well. So just trying, trying to streamline it for them. So I would say the lease offer for parcel H be rescinded by Alaska DOT and PNF. It does not meet the goals outlined in the new Girdwood Comprehensive Plan or the current Girdwood State Airport Master Plan. We have to look up exactly what the title of that is.
All right. I'm finding that word. Everyone liked that word.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Steve and neighbors. Uh, any other comments from the board?
I'm going to try one more time at getting the wording there. So uh, the fourth bullet point would be um, that the municipality work with DT, DOT, Alaska Department of Transport and PF, um, Public Facilities um, to request rescinding of parcel, of the lease on parcel H, uh, since it does not meet the goals of Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, recently adopted Girdwood Comprehensive Plan or the Girdwood Airport Master Plan.
Okay, I think Kelly had her hand up or something.
It was up, it went down.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to, um, I don't know where or if this fits in. I just want to state for the record that I am a licensed pilot and leaseholder of the Girdwood Airport. I hold a long-term lease with the Alaska Department of Transportation State Leasing and I have a hanger on airport property. The lease is executed over five years ago, has a duration of 50 years. So I have a financial uh, relationship with the state of Alaska through the leasing and with the municipality of Anchorage for property taxes. Just want that on the table. Don't know if it's relevant here, but there it is.
Thank you, Kelly. I will take that as your disclosure and I think it is relevant here. Uh, on the list of disclosure process, you just gave a detailed description of your interest and I'll just go through a couple more questions, okay? Uh, is, is the interest financial or personal?
Financial.
And if it's financial, what is the size of the interest?
Uh, the state lease, well, collectively for our whole hanger, of which I'm about one tenth, is $4,700 and the state, and the municipal taxes are 47,000. So I guess 400 to the state and 4,000 to the municipality.
And who holds this interest?
Uh, I do personally.
And you did kind of cover this in the other part, but the interest arose when?
Um, I think it was around 2020, but five years ago is when the state lease was initiated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do you believe your interest prevents you from placing the public interest on the official action above your private interest? And do you believe you should be excused from participation in the official action on this matter? Do any other members have questions for the member disclosing? And there, there is a three-part one that is the impact of the interest. So how does the matter before the body impact the interest? Is the interest a substantial part of the matter under consideration?
Uh, my interest is not impacted at all by the matter on the table.
And does the impact on the interest directly vary with the outcome of the official action?
No.
Is the impact on the interest immediate or conjectural and dependent on factors beyond the official action?
There's no impact.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Uh, and the bodies always welcome to override the ruling of the chair or we could vote whatever you feel comfortable. Um, in other bodies, they might say what they feel comfortable with in their fellow members. I would rule, Kelly, that you can be recused from this vote as the item um, poses a, a substantial conflict of interest in this matter.
Wait, just to be clear, you believe that my conflict of interest is substantial and therefore I should be recused? Can you state the basis upon which you determine substantial?
When it's financial interest greater than uh, $40 on this board, we were supposed to be declaring a disclosure um, for ethical reasons and not saying that your experience and your comments are not relevant. You're very valued on this board right now. But based on our training for recusal, I think we still have a quorum to represent the community and uh, recusing you from the vote is, is what I would feel.
But that I pay $400 a year to the state, but it has absolutely no impact by this.
Kelly, you're not, go back and forth with the chair. Uh, another, another board member is allowed to mention anything or we could vote if the board felt more comfortable voting on whether Kelly can participate in the vote of the letter.
I'd like to say, I think this is, this is kind of a difficult case because I think there's, there's arguments both ways. If it was, let's take a, let's take an analogy, a poor analogy. If there was a, if I, if I was living in Girdwood and I was renting a house from somebody and um, my landlord had an item in front of us, whether I like it or not, I would always be thinking about what's my, how does my decision affect whether this lease gets renewed or not? So if it was that side of the relationship, I think it is clear that it would be a substantial uh, conflict and I would want to be recused. Um, it's not that degree, but it's in that direction. And I think that makes this a difficult, a difficult judgment. Uh, I have sympathy uh, for the chair in having to make this decision. And I also understand, I think, where Kelly is coming from. But uh, I'm not going to ask her a vote.
Okay.
I'm going to ask for a vote.
Okay. Any other comments? So staff, we, I'd like a vote if Kelly can participate. So yes, vote, you can't.
Not in the, not in the ethics rules.
Oh, after, but.
No, I mean, the, the vote on whether, the vote now on whether there is a conflict or not, Kelly cannot vote on.
Right. Kelly cannot vote on this exact item. So yes, vote is that um, she can participate in this item. No vote is that she cannot, just.
So, sorry, you said yes would be?
She can participate.
She can participate. So it's not whether there's a conflict, it's whether there's not a conflict. Just make it, whichever way.
Which way you make sense to you.
Are we doing it in terms of conflict or are we doing participation?
Keep it in the positives.
Right, it's participation, okay. Uh, no, well, it's an overall, the yes would be an overall, what you suggested.
Okay.
Which is the same thing.
Okay. You don't have a role meaning, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mike Edgington?
No.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
I don't think I.
Yes, you do.
You vote. Rob, Brianna Sullivan?
Uh, yes.
Okay, motion, she can participate.
Yep.
Okay. There we go.
The motion carried three to one and Kelly may participate in the vote, which is already on the table that has to do with the really well-stated fourth bullet point that I think all of us understand.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I meant to vote, I, I meant to vote no.
And it still passes.
Right, okay.
It would not pass if the.
It would be two to.
Yeah, what order, it would not pass if it was two to. It would fail and the chair, the chair.
And I'm voting against myself if I just said yes, right?
True. Is this a vote, is this a reconsideration of the book?
Yeah, I rescind my last vote um, to say no, not overruling my own ruling.
Okay, so Kelly can't partake. So it's left to the board of four to make a decision on the motion right now to add that bullet, bullet point four.
Got it, I think we can do it. Okay. Any other comments on the, the letter?
So a yes vote is we add the fourth bullet point?
Uh, yes, uh, amending the letter.
Yep, amending the letter to add the fourth bullet point. Thank you.
Okay, ready for roll call? What?
Okay, uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Aknik? Oh, sorry. Getting a roll here. Um, Connor Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four zero.
Okay, uh, anyone need a break?
Could, could I take a minute?
Few minutes.
Could be a five minute.
Five minute recess before item.
Yeah. Turn at nine fifteen.
Can we move that to fifteen? Hey, great places.
No, taking a recess.
Waiting for me, I'm.
I need to prepare.
All right, online.
Everyone in the room, it's nine fifteen. We'd love to see you finish the business today.
Are we?
You're back live, yep.
Back in live, thank you everyone. I entertain a motion to go to number eleven, finish number ten after.
Yeah, just before we do that, can we formally um, get a new item uh, after fourteen for the other part of that? So if we take the um, if we take this, basically the item would be the LUC recommendation to pursue, et cetera. And we'll just move that onto a new item after item fourteen.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
A discussion?
I think this needs two thirds.
Constant, oh, two thirds about to change item. Any, okay, then we need to vote. Objection, any, it's just to move the next item after, after these items, so ten B down to after fourteen. Okay. Any objections? It would pass, um.
No, he's got her hand.
But Kelly had her hand up before this. Kelly?
I have a question, um, well, it's unrelated to this specific vote, so if you want to take this vote and then I can ask my question, but that's fine.
Okay, we'll vote and then you go for it. Uh, any objections? Hearing none, that is done for after fourteen. So before number eleven, Kelly, please ask your question.
Yeah, I just, um, with regard to municipal code and conflicts of interest, the municipal code says that the body determines whether the interest is substantial, but does not grant authority to exclude a member without a majority decision. So the vote that should have been taken was, was the conflict of interest substantial? And whether the conflict of interest is substantial determines whether or not a person can vote. The wording of it got confusing, obviously, because it caused you to vote the wrong way. But I don't think we voted on the topic that code requires and then that requires a majority to, to determine substantial conflict. So I think we need to redo it and I think we need to redo it in alignment with code.
Okay, Kelly, we have the muni disclosure card right in front of us and I'm not saying you're not reading something that's accurate, but uh, we can have that discussion at another meeting. On number eleven.
I think, no, I'm sorry, I think she raised a parliamentary point. Um, and I, I think she might be right. If the code says that we have to have a majority agree she has a conflict of interest, it's not the way we stated the, the um, question exactly. And it certainly didn't pass the majority agreeing that there was a conflict of interest. So if she's.
Right, this isn't.
If that's code, we need to follow code. You don't get to decide, you're not going to follow code.
Yeah, this that I'm looking at is not code, it's not what she said, so I'm not looking at that to say it's wrong or right. Um.
I am raising a parliamentary issue and the parliamentary issue is that the vote is whether or not there's a substantial conflict. And that is not the vote that was taken. That's the vote that's required, but it's not the vote that was taken.
I understand.
Can I ask you a question?
Hmm?
Yeah, I'm hearing quotes of code. Can you say North Code specifically, what section?
Um, Anchorage Municipal Code one point one five point zero six zero echo.
Okay, thank you. Want to read it?
Can you say again, was it one point one five?
One point one five zero six zero echo.
Under gifts, there are conflicts of interest.
Okay, you're only going.
Oops, there it is.
Right there.
And E.
Section D.
D.
E, echo.
E.
Yeah, and then part. Part two, D, I don't know if that.
So D would have been ever the board's appeal, like your chance to uh, share. And I, I don't think I would, that's why I thought I wouldn't vote on that.
It's not necessarily important for tonight, but I think we need to get a lot more understanding of this. And my understanding, reading through code, is that the vote is whether or not the conflict is substantial and it requires a majority to carry. And that is not what was done, and so I don't believe that we followed code or process.
Right, thank you, Kelly. We haven't read it that way um, since I remember here, so. Thank you for pointing it out. And I think we're all reading it right now and interested.
Can I read your question?
I read it to the point, says a majority. I don't know any other way to interpret that besides majority.
I think the problem with the majority vote is which is the majority vote? Is the majority vote to exclude, to exclude or is the majority vote to include? Because if we have a tie, neither pass. I think that's where there's, I, this is a, to me, this is a, this is a request of the ethics board.
The absence of a majority means that my participation is preserved because a majority is required to, for recusal. But we can ask the ethics board, I don't care about that at all. And again, I don't think it's substantial for tonight, but I think it does matter with regard to understanding the rules and making sure that we're following them.
I, I agree, sorry, can I?
Yeah.
I agree, we should, we should, this is an unusual set of circumstances and I think we need to, we need to work out on the right processes in the future. I agree with you. And it isn't as clear cut, it's not as clear cut as uh, as this guideline suggesting. For the case when there is a tie vote.
Is the board ready to do eleven or? What, could we?
Sorry, your question is kind of now, right? Um.
As we are talking about ten B after number fifteen, I mean, people in the room waiting for that item.
Um. I would like to hear if anybody has opinion on this besides the majority vote, but my understanding from what I'm reading here, and again, the majority vote needs to be one thing, it's not a tied vote. So it's pretty clear to me, like, we could retake this vote, but if it splits the same way, it, we misread the results and, and the way code is written indicates that Kelly would be allowed to speak, or sorry, would be allowed to participate if the vote is the same as it was.
Right. And in an earlier, different context, it wouldn't change the outcome of the letter, uh, our resolution. I understand what you're saying.
Well, I think this is different. This is a very important protocol playing.
Margaret?
I think maybe the question that needs to be resolved right now is to actually make the motion match what it should have been. Which wouldn't break my heart anyway because there was so much confusion in the motion and the vote. So perhaps if the group were to decide to vote on the motion, that would make more sense, which would be, is Kelly's conflict substantial?
Okay.
Or some, something along those lines.
And then would, would the chair vote on that? Because I'm asking, the chair is asking the board if there's a substantial conflict. And then the person in, talking about wouldn't vote on that, so.
Right.
Three in the majority of threes, two. Right?
Yeah, I agree. Your decision's been made because you made the ruling.
Right.
So it'd be left to the residing members who are not part of this conflict to make the decision.
Right, so I'm willing to go to number ten and change the order of the day to go back to number ten. And right before we took the break to say that, that if the board would like to vote or is there a substantial conflict for Kelly to vote?
If it was like that vote, please.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Mike Edgerton?
Sorry, I'm confused. What are we doing now?
So the, the ruling of the chair was that there was substantial conflict and Kelly should be recused from voting in this situation. Now the board is considering, do they agree with the ruling of the chair? Uh, that Kelly does have substantial conflict and cannot uh, vote on this issue.
I think the problem is that's how we phrased it last time. That's not the way we want to phrase it this time, so what, it's still unclear how you appeal.
Are you, I guess, are you agreeing with the decision of the chair?
Well, the, the, I think it's the other way around. If we read this, if we're going to follow what the, what the code says here, then if there's an appeal uh, against the, or if there's appeal basically to override the uh, the decision of the presiding officer, we're not making a vote to override, we're just appealing it, in which case it goes back to the vote of the body. And the vote of the body is to uh, the, the vote of the body then would be to um, declare a substantial conflict of interest. So there we would need three votes, to say, we'd need more than two votes to say yes. But I think we're at the same point, we just have to, it's just phrased in a way where what we're doing now is we're, rather than voting whether we're disagreeing with, uh, rather than voting about whether we're disagreeing with the vote of the chair, we're asking the question independently. We're just throwing it back to the body and the body is answering the question. I think this is what. So we go back to the, so the question is, do the four of us believe that Kelly has a substantial conflict of interest, yes or no?
Okay, once again, I'm sorry, but I see one person deciding.
Not one person deciding, one person reading.
It is you repeatedly deciding for us what parliamentary procedure is, and I, I disagree with this meeting. And I agree with the reading that it's the three remaining members of the board that vote. Now, if we want to bring that later, and, and I do really want to draw attention to, like, we're at nine thirty and we have, um, I, I don't know when we actually do keep track.
It's nine fifteen and we re, reset.
Yeah.
Finished three sets, so.
But we, we have so much else of us tonight. Uh, we're half an hour from ten o'clock. Um, could, I, I would like to just um, call this to question and uh, state it this way, I don't know the answer to the chair question. But there is value in taking the vote regardless whether you vote or not, because uh, we misread the uh, results of the vote we took before.
Okay, we're calling a question or a vote?
But can I, will I ask you again, what is the question we are voting on?
Um, what I heard Kyle say is how I understood it.
I would really like to hear somebody say it.
Well, I've been told I cannot say it.
Right?
By one person deciding, one person deciding what it could be.
Mike, Jennifer, one needs to state the question.
I'll state it based on what the code says. What the code says is if the presiding officer excises parliamentary authority by making initial ruling, which you did on disclosure of private interests, the decision of the presiding officer may be appealed uh, to the body for a majority vote. The way I read that is, I guess the appeal could be one person, let's just assume it is. It was appealed, and he now makes, now makes a vote on whether um, the, whether the disclosure is significant. So, which I think is what we're all saying. So there would be a vote by the body excluding um, the person who has, has made the disclosure, so that'd be four of us, as to whether or not the disclosure is significant and it needs a majority of votes. There need three people to say, yeah, to exclude, kind of.
Okay, so this vote is if the disclosure is significant.
That's what it, what code says, yeah.
Appealed to the body, yes. Okay, is everyone comfortable with that?
No, sorry.
No, okay.
So sorry, it makes it clear that the vote is supposed to be on should this person be accused or not.
Yeah.
And so uh, that's slightly, I mean, certainly slightly different. You need a majority to say the person shouldn't. And order something to it.
It's the same thing, yes.
Ryan?
I'm, I'm sorry, um. This seems like we're going down quite a, a wormhole and we're not doing um, justice to the uh, our community that is here for further issues. And I would like to suggest that it would be great if we got together in a work session and took care of this at, at a later time. We, we have business of the community that we need to attend to tonight. This is um, this dragging, this is ridiculous. I'm sorry.
I agree, thank you. So this.
Let's, let's move on.
On to number 11? Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone, for enduring. This is about the next Monday's meeting with MOA, and Margaret always puts up the draft agenda. This could be something you could email staff about. And if you have any comments on it right now, you can make the comments. Brian?
Is there a ethics person that could attend that meeting with us?
We could ask the municipal lawyer.
We, could we ask him to attend, and then I think we can get some, make some progress on my over tonight.
Yes, so add, add an item as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on number 11?
So I, I just would actually maybe reconsider that request and maybe see if I can get the municipal lawyer to come to, we're going to do a special meeting for reorganization, maybe have him there, just not to waste the time of MOA staff and the municipal manager. I could work that into that special meeting.
Great, so we can do, okay.
Yeah, add that to a special meeting.
All right.
Anything else on this agenda right now? Always follow up in your email. Number 12, we already did. Number 13, LUC recommendation for GBOS letter of non objection for development master plan for Alphen Globe. Margot?
Hi, did the chair want to speak to that at all since you were at the LUC?
Uh, I.
Oh, I.
I think, sure, sure. This has gone through quite a bit of community meeting, and tons of questions have been asked and answered, and it's sailed through LUC in the last meeting to approve a letter of, sorry, it's a letter of non objection. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you for all the information packet.
So, my name is Marco Zaccaro, I'm with the Architects, and I'm here representing the Girdwood Building Company, who is proposing a mixed use development on High Tower Road. I think Ellen Twynham is on, and she's going to share her screen with us, and Ellen, if you would go to the location plan. Also, I saw was Elise Huggins, who is our landscape architect, and Zach Miller, one of the owners. And also, I got Grant Matthews, a civil engineer, was going to join us, but I don't see him up there. Anyway, those folks can answer your questions if anything particular comes up that requires their input. The other owner, Corey Piper, owner of Seville Physical Therapy, who will be occupying building, will not be able to join us tonight. So the project location is on High Tower Road, as you can see. Who knows where that is? It's across from the Girdwood Clinic. And Ellen, could you go to the next screen, please, location plan? So if you zoom out there. So, so after before the planning department is a development master plan. And the, this building would be a use by right except for some design changes, or some changes to the Girdwood design standards that we feel will improve the project we're proposing. And there's six changes to the design standards that I'll go through that we consider improvements to the underlying zoning district that that will actually make the, the project much better for the community and the neighbors. The building that we're proposing to right now, that we're going to be looking at this evening, is on the right, it's to the, to the left, sorry, to the south. It's phase one of a two-phase project on two separate lots. The lot to the right is not designed yet, but it'll be very similar to the project that we're proposing to, which is to accept in phase one. Ellen, do you mind going to the first renderings, please? This is a 16,000 square foot building, mixed use. There, there will be two retail shops on the first floor, five parking spots to the east inside the building at the first level. Corey's clinic will be on the second level, and then the remaining spaces will be by condominiums. And Zach Miller, I think you're on. Zach, do you, could you speak to what the owner's vision for this project is, if you don't mind? I think you're muted.
Yeah, absolutely. Can everybody hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Hey, thanks, Marco, for kicking this off. I really appreciate it. Sorry Corey couldn't be here tonight. I, not a physical therapist myself, but I know Corey's been serving the community for 12 years. He's worked out of a couple of different facilities there, which are definitely less than adequate for what his vision is for being able to have a first-rate physical therapy clinic directly across from the brand-new clinic just to the, the west of us. And his, his real vision is to be able to serve his current clients and future clients, and be able to allow increase of services so that a lot of the Girdwood residents don't have to access the road system to get to Anchorage. That's his mission. That's what he's trying to do with this building. And we're, we're really excited to be able to offer a mixed use as part of this to bring more services to Girdwood in general. I think it is definitely needed, and we're, we're really excited about some of the potential tenants we have that are going to be in those shop spaces.
Okay, thank you, Zach. I'm going to try to spin through this real quick because it's getting late, so I'm just going to show you the floor plans and briefly touch on the, of the amendments to the design standards that we're looking at. Ellen, do you mind popping up the model, please? So, if you would go to the first floor plan. So, on the, on the left is the arcaded way along High Tower Road. The two units on the left are the two shops and the, the parking spots you can see there at the garage space. And then Ellen, do you mind going to the second floor plan? And so there's two condominium units, one four-bedroom and a three-bedroom. And then Corey's physical therapy clinic is on the, on the right-hand side. Then Ellen, you go to the third floor, please. And on that level are three condominium units. And two of them are three bedrooms, and one of them is a four-bedroom. And Ellen, if you don't mind, going to the rooftop decks. And then the, the upper units all access rooftop decks with hot tubs, et cetera. So the, Ellen, do you mind sharing the site plan? Okay. So go, go back one slide. So the first design standard that we're proposing is in this zoning district, in all zoning districts in Girdwood, you have to cross setbacks at a 90-degree angle. And we're proposing to run our driveway down the property line between the two parcels on phase one and phase two. That way, we're not forced to have two driveways into, one into each property that combines the driveway. And what we're proposing to the municipality is a concept called the Booner. It's from Denmark. It's kind of a, a living street with used for cars and seating. And, and the city just recently wrote a code, short code provision for, for the Booner concept. And we're basically the first ones in the municipality to use that. And Elise Huggins, the landscape architect, proposed that a while back for the Glacier City Center, but we brought it forward to use on this project. And Ellen, do you have access to those photos of the Booner? So something like that. Basically what we're proposing between phase one and phase two. Without, we won't have on-street parking like that. We will have a handicap parking for for a chorus clinic on the phase two lot, and potentially this little, if you go back to the, to the site plan. And potentially that Booner, which goes down the middle, will add, and access the, there's a walk, a trail in Glacier Creek. So that could be used to access that too, which, which the owners are in support of. So that's the first change to the, the underlying zoning design standards, which we think is a big improvement on what, you know, is envisioned in code. And then the second main design standard that we're looking at, Ellen, if you go back to the, to the model, is a flat roof in this zoning district for commercial buildings. It states that all roofs visible from the public right-of-way shall be slope roofs. And we don't think that's a good idea in this zoning district because snow sliding off the slope roofs will impact neighboring properties. And also, we want to make use of the, the flat roof sign. And then there's some other minor things in code that we're looking at, you know, two-foot offsets on High Tower, High Tower Road, which is just resolving a geometric complication with the underlying zoning district that doesn't allow you to meet standard. You should have a four-foot offset for a building 42 feet long or longer in this zoning district because of electrical easements and required arcaded walkways and maximum and minimum front yard setbacks. We are not able to meet that standard. So just resolving, you know, an issue in code. And I don't know if I should bore you with the other design standards that we're resolving, but there are minor things like that. And you can read them in your staff packet. Anyway, we presented all these to the Land Use Committee. They, in detail, and they it was well-received, and we got a support to, for you to place a letter of non-objection. We did get, we did, staff report isn't available, but we did get all the departmental comments, and they were pretty minor. I don't know, we should go through them with you. One was fire access, which we resolved. One was drainage in the, which they proposed a solution to. So civil engineering has a path for that. There was a couple other minor ones, which I don't recall. But those are the two major ones. Let's see.
Those were in the minutes from that meeting?
What's that?
Were those in the minutes from that meeting?
Uh, no, these just came out today.
Oh.
Ellen, do you mind going to the, the comments, the staff comments, and go to page three? Oh, yeah, I can read them out. Traffic engineer supports a 12-foot driveway. He's like utilizing the Booner concept, but there's some plant landscaping that could be impacted by local operations. So we just need to resolve that. And then last one was point four-foot turning and maneuvering provided when exiting the garages, which we have to mention on the site plans. I just didn't see our dimensions. And then the next page was the two, if you go to the next page, this is project management and engineering discussing the drainage in the Booner, which they then, at the bottom, propose a solution for, which looks reasonable to me. And the fire apparatus access, we already addressed that comment. And if you'd like to see the map where we addressed it, you can take a look at it. Otherwise, I think I'll open it up to questions.
I just asked a question. Just on the comments there, are they public or not public? I don't.
Elizabeth Appleby sent them to me today. She said, you know, because the staff report isn't done yet. And I told you guys a while back that I went, tried to get the staff, whatever comments I was aware of. So she sent these to me, so I can present them to you.
Thank you.
But you haven't provided these to us yet.
No, because I, I could send them to you.
Thank you.
Or you can give my hard copy here. Yeah, I mean, we spin through the rest of them. There's, there's no, most of them are no objections from all, or no comments.
Thank you, Marco.
Those are the, those are the four big ones.
Glad the fire department could have their
Yeah.
way in too.
And, you know, when we go to get our state fire marshal permit, we have to obtain a letter from Michelle Weston anyway. So she'll have a chance to review the project and make any comments.
Brian?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to mention that when she, when they say fire, this is coming from fire prevention at the municipality.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief Weston. Hey, Brian?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to voting in favor of the letter of non-objection this evening, that question. Do you have any idea how many, how many rentals we're going to be losing when, when this, when the buildings are torn down on the lot?
Good. Zach, do you know the answer to that?
Right now, Corey operates his physical therapy clinic out of one of them, and then two are currently being rented.
So, one.
And those are, those are, those are small cabins. One is a one-bedroom and one is a two-bedroom that are currently on the property.
Yeah, and I have to say, my son is going to physical therapy. And Corey's clinic is sorely in need of being replaced.
I, I, I spend time in there fixing, fixing my old body too, that's for sure. And then when the, when the building in the, in the first phase is, is demolished, will the building that is in the second phase, which is lot one, will that be demolished at the same time also?
Zach can answer this, but I don't believe so.
No, the, the plan is to keep the extru, the existing structure to the, the north lot. I think it's lot one there. And we're going to work around that in the building process to keep that going.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on Brian's point, just to clarify, it's that building to the north which currently is, has to rental properties in it. Is that correct?
It actually has three spaces, the, the yoga shack, and then two rentals.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Marco. The motion or item?
I, I have a question. Just to be very transparent, as Marco pointed out, his, you know, his son is, is there for physical therapy. And, and I also spend time in that, in that facility getting, getting worked on. And, and I expect as I get older, I'm going to be spending even more time in there. Is that, is that any issue with, with me voting?
Disclosure?
Yeah.
Well, I feel like the applicant is Corey, but it's Marco presenting the project. You could definitely say I am a customer of this, this person.
I am a customer.
And then it would be appropriate to go through the disclosures unless you have anything else to say, like you, if you would request to be recused, because.
I, I don't believe that my being a customer of, of Corey's should, would, should have caused me to recuse myself from this.
Thank you, Brian. Usually we go through the whole thing, and thank you for disclosing your potential conflict. And the detailed description of your interests is that you have gone to him for physical therapy and intend to in the future?
Yes.
And it's financial or personal interest?
Personal.
And who holds the interest?
I do.
The interest arose?
Lifestyle.
Do you believe your interest prevents you from placing the public interest on the official action above your private interest?
No.
And you already said you don't feel that you should be excused for participation. And do any members have questions for Brian? I would rule that your interest not rise to be significant conflict to recuse yourself from this vote of the applicant for the project Marco Zaccaro, Zee Architects. Anyone is welcome to overrule the chair. Hearing none?
Thank you.
We'll keep going. Anything else? No one made the motion yet.
I'll make the motion to the letter of non-injection.
Sorry, second by Jennifer. Any further comments?
I'm, I'm gonna follow up on the question. I'm actually stealing Brian's question. I mean, you know, I support the project, but it is worth noting that if we're going to go from two smaller, presumably lower cost rentals to a number of multimillion dollar apartments, which I doubt will be workforce, available for workforce rentals, which is unfortunate. And I wish there was something we can do about that. We don't have a tool at the moment. Having said that, I think I, I do support the project.
Thank you. We have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. My guest, Ted?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Windgaard?
Yes.
Kelly Oknek?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
And Ellen, that. Number fourteen, LUC recommendation for GBOS resolution of support for text change to allow retail store in GC ten. Tim Cabana.
Thank you. I think.
Do you mind doing my stuff?
Have somebody.
They'll introduce and then you can follow through, follow up with the introduction. You're still good to stand there, Tim. Hopefully it won't take long.
I'll be really quick. So we have a, we have a resolution in the packet. This is going through vision. There was revision suggest, there was a change suggested, there was an earlier version, change suggested that land use should be incorporated. Some changes suggested from, from my colleague and land use supervisor as well, Jennifer, which had been incorporated. We, it's broadly similar to what we looked at last month. This basically takes GC ten currently does not allow retail. This would change it to be pretty, roughly consistent with some of the commercial areas in Gerwood to allow retail with some different process depending on the size of the retail building. If it's below two thousand square foot, it's available by rights. It's between two and four thousand square foot. There is a administrative review. If it's above four thousand square feet, up to twenty thousand square feet, there is a major site plan review. There is not a conditional use process for any of these things. So it does not have to come through a full review and public hearings in front of planning zone.
Mike, more to add?
I believe we got Patrick on there to give us a little feeling or better.
Hi, yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have a little presentation, but I know we're bumping up on time here. We just wanted to introduce ourselves to GBoss. My name is Patrick Mead. My wife and I own and operate Homer Shergan Hardware down in Homer, Alaska, which is an Ace Hardware where in a pharmacy. And together with my brother-in-law, are interested in opening a community Ace Hardware store of similar fashion in Gerwood. We think that we have the tools at our disposal and the experience to fit offerings for the community that would really help. We spoke at land use a little bit about aesthetic, but we're not even there yet. The pack does explain some background information about our current store and how it relates to the Gerwood community. Homer is a small Alaskan community, I would say pretty similar in feelings and experiences as Gerwood. And we have a store that is roughly thirty thousand square foot in total space, but more of twenty-three thousand square foot of retail space. And we had been discussing with, between ourselves of a store in the range of six thousand to nine thousand, depending on development costs. And what we bring to our community is a mix of general ace hardware, which everyone is familiar with, plus outside vendors that support the entire breadth of shopper that lives in our community from toys, gifts, party supplies, clothing, a lot of essentials, everything except for food. That is something that we don't do. In the slides, there's just some examples and some pictures of our store and what it looks like with the offerings. Like I said, it would be a smaller size, just be given the population size and the needs of the community. But we have over the past fifty years of being in Homer, really tailored our offerings for our local community. And that's something that we focus on in Gerwood as well. As you can see, there are everywhere from home goods to, to personal care items. It, our store, we kind of consider it a community staple where people go to meet to get what they need. And if not, just walk around and burn time and talk to each other and see each other in person, which is what we would want to bring as well to the community. There's some more details in here, but I don't want to waste people's time with loyalty reward programs or, or anything. But we, we support the local community here. We're invested in it. It is our friends and neighbors, and that's what we would also be a part of in Gerwood. Next slide, I'm sorry. We were talking with land use and, and we don't have a hard figure on how many employees, but it would support anywhere from nine to twelve full-time employees is what we are thinking or full-time equivalent employees. Be, you know, have a very community focused in, in the customer service friendly drive at our store. So that's something we would look at. This is just some stats about our retention with our employees here, and we have a mix of long-term and entry-level jobs that help support people who are either looking for, you know, part-time jobs as, as second income or kids getting their first job, which we've been successful with as well. I think everyone's seen the proposed site, at least at land use. It would be across from the brewery, hopefully. Similar size and aesthetic of that, but nothing has been developed. We have not worked with any architects or have any floor plans to, to give at this time.
Patrick, just a moment. I need an extension to.
Sorry.
To extend. You're fine.
We've reached about fifteen minutes.
Also, second, any objections? Okay, great. You're doing great, Patrick. Keep going.
Okay. Well, we're almost done here and then I'll let Tim and Mike speak to the specifics of it. One thing land use was brought up there that we discussed was parking and the overflow parking with the brewery. I think that if we were developing this site, we would at least double the nearly triple the available parking spots. So you could see where it there where it would, would provide a good amount of parking in addition. And then down below, we currently in Homer are actually in the neighborhood as well, and we've never had any impacts or complaints about it. We really don't have any outside noise pollution, barring the occasional truck pulling up with, you know, a backup alarm for a minute at most. We recycle all of our cardboard. We have actually recycling dump bin on the site as well for other community members. We really don't have a lot of outside trash. We have a small eight cubic yard trash per week, and that's for a store that would be conceivably at least three times bigger, you know, or a third of the size of the one that we operate now. So it's a low environmental impact. There's no gas. There's no outside pollution. It's just a building with workers and customers going in and out. We talked about traffic in land use as well and how there might be some conflict or overspill with the brewery. These are some stats about how our days are at the store in Homer. I would anticipate be pretty similar. We're really a nine or ten AM to four PM shopping heavy. We only get a quarter of our business past four PM. So that would have a little less overflow with the busier times in the brewery as they're ramping up in the afternoons and evenings. And our hours of operation, we were going to kind of tailor or anticipated maybe around the nine, nine AM to six PM. So we didn't think that there would be as much crossover as what was expressed at the first meeting there. And our busiest days are actually just Monday through Saturday and Sunday is a very low use day. So I know that Sundays at the brewery can be popular as well. They're not at a hardware store. Everyone was out doing other things. We talked about aesthetic. We just took some pictures of places that looked nice. There is no design constraints with Ace Hardware. It would be totally independent. We've worked with some architectural firm to design something nice, similar to any hardware store you've been in, in anywhere in America, especially the new ones. They have a nice facade. And that would be our goal here and we'd want to be proud of it. And that's pretty much it. I'll kick it to Aaron or Tim for any specific questions or, or if you guys have anything for, for me, I can help answer.
Thank you very much, Patrick. That was great. I really appreciated all the extra info after land use questions.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board?
Quick, thank you very much, Patrick. I know Homer also has a housing crisis, has a problem with affordability and availability. How does it impact your staff and how do you see that? Being, or do you see that being a problem here as?
You're, you're right. I don't think we have quite as bad of, as one as Gerwood. We have more available space just further out. So we have a lot of commuters and more available housing within a fifteen-minute drive or thereabout. But yeah, it is a very, very hard thing for us to get affordable housing for retail jobs. When often the houses that are available here are, you know, more than a half a million to, to above. We have people constantly moving around and moving out of the state. So we have a highlight, we have a higher turnover than I think we would if we that people just move here, work with us, but then find it, it's not affordable enough for them to stay and then move away. And we haven't solved it. And I was listening for ideas from Gerwood as well. And, and so it is a, a challenge. It's something we battled with increased wages and, you know, really doing anything we can to, to keep people, you know, hopefully able to, to rent here. But again, I think we have a little bit less than Gerwood does in terms of a problem.
May I ask an unfair question? Patrick, other, other resort communities have, have code requirements that when commercial properties, when new commercial retail or whatever are being constructed, there's a requirement to create some housing with it to at least address some of the additional staffing. We don't have that now and probably it won't, it would never be in place even when you did this project. But just conceptually, is that something that will stop you going forward with a project or is that something you'd still consider? No commitment, no commitment one way or the other.
Yeah, okay. As long as you're okay with that, you know, I, every option's on the table for us. We are so early into the process for us that we are open to hearing ideas from people and exploring any option. We understand the problem and it's a problem for us, especially if key personnel cannot, cannot stay with us or, you know, leave at, you know, inopportune times. So doing anything we can to help, you know, prevent that from happening on our end is something that we, we explore.
We have the space to do it. We're going to try to do it. It's, it's just all depends on like how difficult everything's made. It's like something like you guys got to definitely understand as we go through this process. It's just like Pat and I both run our own personal businesses. We absolutely love Gerwood. We both plan on being in Gerwood for basically ever. So it's just like we're on deep rooted here and, and out of this community for a super long time and likely continue to be. So, but it's just like the same point in time. It's, everything's met with like roadblocks with putting people, like if we build a hardware store and we want to add housing, it's just like impossible for us to do it for every reason besides restrictions or whatever it might be. Yeah, we're not going to do it. But I mean, it's something that we definitely will entertain. Start looking at like the construction equipment in the space. It's just like, I see it day to day, just like all you guys do. You know, it's just like the struggle of it sucks. You see it on the Gerwood Facebook pages. You see it everywhere, right? So it's like if we get to add and be part of a solution. Damn right, we're going to try to do that.
Thank you.
We have another question online from Willem. So any of you can take it and then just say your name if you have it yet. Willem?
Hey, yeah, Patrick, thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to say on Mike's note there, if you guys need any workforce housing or help with that, we would be more than happy to rent you units in our workforce housing. So. And then also when we were doing, I think I mentioned it's this in the last presentation that this was first shown at. But when we were interviewing community members, this was probably one of the most sought-after retail opportunities or spaces with a hardware store in the community. So I think it'd be a great offering for, for Gerwood. So that's it.
Yeah. And I mean, I think also, I mean, you can kind of see all the kind of speak with, I appreciate what Willem's doing. I've worked a little bit with him through some of the YMCA stuff with the rec center. And you can see Palmer is definitely making it a priority and you can see that with workforce housing, even them taking this commitment out, taking another step back from actually building projects and they're just focusing on building housing, which is, I think, pretty, pretty good on Paul Price's side. So yeah, thank you, Willem.
Jennifer and Bryce tied his hand up. I don't see it.
Okay. So I just wanted to say I'm excited about the idea of the hardware store too. I think I've spent enough time at home deep on surprises and not charging us for it. But I did, just because you mentioned it before, this is to Patrick. I, I just, you mentioned before that you didn't think you were going to have too much overlap in crowds. And I just wanted to say, I think it might not be unclear on how heavily the, the brewery gets hit on Saturday afternoons. And so given that you have already listed those times as, excuse me, you're a major crowd times, you might want to, when you get a chance, come by the summer Saturday crowd at the brewery. I think you'll be impressed. So I wouldn't count, excuse me, I wouldn't count on your hours being complimentary, just to give you a heads up on that. And then the other thing is I feel like I, I do have to point out that there were some big concerns brought up about this conversation at land use, which has nothing to do with your representatives or the program or the, or sorry, excuse me, the project or anything else. But the, there were some, some issues with the land use conversation around this. And that land use vote has been challenged. I maybe should have mentioned this right off the bat. So land use is asked to, by the chairs of land use and other people have asked that this be reconsidered. Again, not to vote it down, but just because of some issues around the process. And I feel like I need to mention that. Sorry, Brian. But yes, okay.
Okay, no problem. We'll definitely make it to the brewery this summer on Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just. I think it was a, we, we, we went to land use. Lots of people went there that just kind of liked to go in and go to the meeting. So we come up with this offer because that would disenfranchise everybody that went to the last meeting. And I don't see anything that would change. I, I, I took signs around Gerwood, sign them things, left them everywhere. Never had a single person, you know, I said, do you, do you support the Gerwood or a hardware store near the brewery? And I had like ten sheets and not a single person said, no, I want to drive to Ger, our anger each. So I don't see what putting this off or having another vote would do. It, it would be exactly the same thing. I mean, there, you know, I get one or two people that are against it, but overwhelmingly this thing is, this is not a contentious issue in Gerwood. I ran into virtually nobody that's against us. So I don't see why we didn't go backwards. And I've been involved in, I've been the chair of the GBOS. I've been involved in, I've been on the land use committee. I've been on all these committees. We don't have a vote and then unvote it. I've never heard of that happening. So I don't know where this is coming from or, or anything. So I'm adamantly against that, you know. We need to just move forward. We need to make it as easy on these guys so they will not run away because they're good people and they want to do something good to this community. And we don't want to put any more roadblocks in front of them. So we just need to vote on this. So we just need to vote on this and move forward with it.
Marco.
I did look at code in the major site line review, which if there are over 4,000 square feet they'll have to go through, does require a community meeting. So that the building size, we'll get another bite at the end.
Community meeting.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't require, sorry, can I just? Am I right in thinking it does not require a planning and zoning public hearing?
That's correct. It's, but it is a community, which is.
Yeah, so we'll be back. This is just one step and another step. We'll have plenty of chance to go to the Land Use again on this. Once they get thunder on up, this is just to get a checkbox in a code so that they can feel comfortable spending money on architecture and things like that and then come back in front of this committee and and Land Use again. So please don't hold this up. This that we serve at no purpose.
Right.
I'd I'd like to take a moment and also second what what Tim said. I mean, what we're doing here this evening is just making it so that the community says to the store, the store and that that we we approve of the of changing the the environment there to to, you know, be favorable for retail in in that spot. And then then they can move forward with their planning confident that that the that the that the financial end is taken care of. So looking forward to to this vote.
So we have three minutes left, two hands up online and no one's made a motion yet. Now there's basically a presentation, thorough presentation. So I'd entertain motion of extension.
Extend by another 15 minutes. Till 10:30.
Second. Any objections till 10:30? Okay, Josh online. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, this is Josh Hegna from Girdwood Brewing Company. And I just want to say that we totally support the hardware store, Patrick. Great presentation. Love your place down in Homer. And yeah, I think success will breed success, man. Really, you know, we'll appreciate not having to drive to Anchorage for stuff like that. So appreciate. That's all I got.
Thank you, Josh. Bryce?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, so just kind of want to clarify a little things on the whole LUC vote because frankly, it wasn't clear. The whole entire LUC vote wasn't exactly clear on if it was a three, a four or a P. And it wasn't done procedurally correct. So this has nothing to do with the hardware store or nothing to do with the project in general. The project's great. I'm all for it. The problem is that what we're doing is a major code change and we haven't even decided from an LUC and committee perspective, what the correct terminology is going to be underneath the allowed use table. So it really comes down to a process perspective. And no, there is not necessarily a say that this is going to be coming back towards us unless you're going specifically for a major site review or anything else. So this is not about hardware store. It's about a code change. And it made it out of LUC incredibly unclear with multiple other members being confused on what we voted on. So these conversations about workforce housing and other implications for the store are great, but we should be having them in a committee. And GBOS should postpone this item until LUC is able to actually make a clear vote. And yeah, the motion reconsiderer has been placed. So thank you. That's all.
Thanks. And I'll, I presume your hands down, Josh. Just in case. More questions or comments from the board?
The purpose of moving this forward and just getting to a point where we can make a decision. I'll move the motion of approving this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion or motion? Thank you for your time on all of this, everyone that worked on it. Do we have a roll call vote staff?
Sure. I'm Mike Edgerton. Yes. Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Ocknick?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
This item. Next, thank you. Next is, we said we would do, as I understood, 10B, but we could go to new business because of time.
Can I suggest we postpone item 10B to our unscheduled special meeting? Because clearly you need to address the issue of recusal and things like that. And I think I think I agree with you.
Okay, we have that at the motion and second.
Did we already decide?
I think we decided we didn't make the motion.
Okay, all right.
All second. Okay, great. Thank you. It was very multi-layered. So I'm happy to have that another time. 15, we pushed to May. So we're at 16, HEC request for GBSA staff to apply for transfer of HLb parcel 613. Brian or Kyle?
So yes, Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee has recommended that we pursue having HB or HLb parcel 613, which is basically a parcel just south of the baseball field transferred to Parks and Rec where the proposed RB park may be or other recreational lands. So we're introducing that tonight and discussed and further at the next meeting.
Okay.
One quick question. How does that, how does that relate to the park plan? I mean, is this, is it better? What's 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 a better way to approach this? Should we, should we try and get the land transferred and then it gets accrued in the park plan? Or should we wait till the plant plan that starts and then try and do the transfer then? I mean, even if we say we want the transfer now, it's not going to happen for months.
Well, any parcel that has had a ton of public comment and review is this parcel. So I think it's in motion and as the park plan gets drafted, it can be recognized it's either in motion or by the time the park plan gets done, it's transferred.
Okay, good.
So we can, we just know it as we go through the parcel, the plan.
And it the other parcel that is being transferred to Parks and Rec, the Aliaska.
Winter Creek Extension Trail.
Extension Trail. Where where's that stat? Because that's taken years.
Yeah, so I just talked with HLb and they are definitely going to, it's like the next thing to work on. And right now they got several things. They're just trying to complete the work plan. And and last week they said they apologize for the delay on it, but they're going to try to get going this month.
Okay, so that should be in a few months, hopefully.
We probably should see something coming probably by the time. I said I would like to have something by May. And so that by the next major EBS meeting, we have progress on that. And they said they would try to make that.
So if we're going to move ahead with this, we'd be six months to a year, maybe, to transfer that kind of term scale, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kyle, for that. Anything else, Margaret? Anything else here? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Ding ding ding.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.